I'm sure that your video is turned on so we can maintain quorum. This meeting is convened by electronic means by the order from the Minister of Public Safety. And because we're all participating by phone, if any of us lose our connections during the meeting, we'll recess until the connection is restored and that's because this is a quasi judicial hearing for this application. If we lose during the vote, we'll also have staff help you get back in line and pause the process until everybody has the ability to participate. If you have to leave during the meeting, please let the clerk know so we can, again, it's about maintaining quorum. This livestream will continue with audio only. Presentations, amendments, and vote results will be projected to viewers when available. Members can, of the public, can listen to the proceedings via the livestream and, or on the YouTube link which is tweeted out at Van City Clerk on Twitter. Speakers who will be providing comments will do so by phone, the moderator will assist them and when their turn comes up. I want to gratefully acknowledge that we're on the traditional ceded territories of the Musqueam, Skomish, and Sliwatoos. Thank very much for having care for this land and are very much enjoying working with them in partnership as we continue to build this great city together. And thank you, thank you, thank you staff for all the work you've been doing both in these chambers and in your homes and throughout the city, making our city safe and a great place to live, work, and play. Clerk, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Stewart and the Chair, Councillor Carr. Councillor Carr. Councillor De Genova.
Present.
Councillor Fry. Councillor Fry. Councillor Swanson.
Here.
Councillor Hardwick.
Present.
Councillor Weeb.
Present.
Councillor Boyle. Councillor Dominado. Councillor Bly.
Present.
And Councillor Kirby Young. Councillor Kirby Young. The meeting has quorum. Mayor Stewart.
Thanks very much. Before we begin, we have a few announcements. Speakers have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered and you should also state whether you support or oppose the recommendations and whether or not you're a resident of Vancouver. Speakers may only speak once and you can follow along on Twitter at Van City Clerk for updates so you don't miss your turn. Any comments on agenda items can be submitted in writing to publichearing@vancouver.ca. Speakers with presentations are reminded that the public live feed has a slight 20 second delay and to navigate through your slides, please say next and I'll guide you through it just to make sure it goes smoothly. A reminder that council's role at the public hearing is to be a quasi judicial body which means we are only to consider the merits of the rezoning application or heritage designation. Council members may ask clarifying questions from speakers, including the applicant or technical advice from staff, but should save debate for after the close of speakers. And once this is all done, we can approve the application in principle. We can refuse the application or we can defer the application for further consideration. And, um, let's see, so we're at the 4750 Granville Street. Clerks, do you read out the correspondence again? I can't remember.
Mayor Stewart, yes, we will.
Okay, great. So, let's go for that.
Okay, this is an application by Stuart Howard Architects Incorporated to rezone 4750 Granville Street and 1494 West 32nd Avenue from RS 5-1 Family Dwelling District to CD 1 Comprehensive Development District to permit the development of a four-story residential building with 81 secured market rental units. A maximum height of 13.3 meters and a floor space ratio of 1.60 are proposed. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers' listening receipt of public comments. 236 pieces of correspondence in support of the application, 225 pieces of correspondence in opposition to the application, and four pieces of correspondence addressing other aspects of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to approximately 5:00 PM today.
Great, thanks so much. So, we're going to continue hearing from, we have seen the presentations and councils asked some questions and we're in the middle of hearing from the publics. We're going to start with Speaker number 17. Just looking here on.
Mr. Mayor, it's Councillor Carr. I just wanted to note on a point of personal privilege that I am in attendance.
Great, thanks for attending and... Oh, Mr. Mayor, on a point of personal privilege, I'll also acknowledge that I'm here as well, Councillor Fry. I missed the roll. Councillor Fry, great, no problem.
I'll make it three, Councillor Kirby Young.
Thanks to Councillor Kirby Young, that's great. I know we've kind of sandwiched all the meetings today, but we did get started in time with quorum and now we're going to ask the clerks if Matthew Fahy is in chambers or to speak to us in person.
Mayor Stewart is the clerk here and no, he is not here.
Okay, thanks very much. I'm going to go to the moderator and ask if Speaker number 18 Cameron Jones is there and while you're checking, I am going to let other speakers know that those who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free. Clerks, is it the 1-833 number? Yes, 1-833-353-8610 followed by code 29585 hashtag to get on the list. Over to the moderator. We have Cameron Jones on the line.
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you. I'm actually going to pass the phone off to my wife as I developed a bit of a tickle in my throat. I don't want to be coughing on the phone, so if you don't mind, I'll just pass the phone, please.
Yeah, actually, that's...
Hello, Mayor and Councillor.
Oh, sorry ma'am, so it does have to be the registered speaker who... But if you just hold on one second, I'll be right back to you. Just to see what we can do to accommodate you, I'll be right back. Okay ma'am, thanks for calling. I'm just going to ask council, just again, because we're doing all these things remotely, I'm just wondering if I can do yays and nays if council will be willing to allow the speaker after providing her name and if she's a resident of Vancouver to speak. And I'll go yays and nays, all in favor of allowing the speaker, say yay.
Yay.
Opposed, say nay. Thanks very much. So Speaker, you have up to five minutes. If you just let us know your name and if you're a resident of Vancouver, that would be great.
Amanda Jones and yes, I am a resident of Vancouver.
Great, thanks very much. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Hello, Mayor and Councillor, I'm a close neighbor to the proposed project. I oppose the size of this project. I would like to start off by saying that we are very aware and understanding of the housing crisis in Vancouver. Collectively, many of the neighbors are actually supportive of a smaller townhouse-style project that would be less invasive of the heritage values and overall massing of the Shaughnessy area. Some points I would like you to consider. The RS 5 zoning consists of very comprehensive, low-density guidelines. This proposed building does not fit into the requirements. Rezoning has faced much controversy and opposition, is not uncommon, due to lack of fitting without the community and other significant projects. Without proper public involvement, rezoning doesn't work. We feel these types of spot zoning applications require notifying neighbors correctly and this is, in this particular application, COVID-19 heavily distracted surrounding neighbors from being involved. This application moved forward while everyone stayed at home, while the process continued with little public involvement. Many people in the area were unaware of the proposed application altogether. Shaughnessy has been considered to be a well-protected heritage area for a long time and we are worried this development is well-oversized and can set a precedence for the remaining Shaughnessy area. The home directly across the lane is clearly a heritage home that will not be moving anytime soon. It is greatly impacted on many levels, especially with the proposed driveway across the lane from their kitchen and bedroom. We have spent so many years protecting the Shaughnessy area for the heritage values and this is a building is somewhat, is not required to maintain the same guidelines like the other homes. I believe a full and comprehensive review by the city should be required in a significant decision like this application to fully understand how it will impact all areas and neighbors. The city needs to fully understand the possible impact of the area prior to making decisions before it's too late. This would include proper analysis for traffic issues in such a narrow lane that even the developer engineer sees it poses problems in a multiple scenario. The congestion will greatly impact the direct neighbor to the east of the project. If there are any 81 suites and possibly two car rental areas, that equals over 160 vehicles with only 71 underground parking and four visitor spaces. This will severely impact surrounding street parking on the already narrow streets and create a significant increase in traffic in the area. Now factor in deliveries, guests, and other parking requirements for the building, that also must be in consideration. It was suggested that most of these renters will be busing as the main transportation source and will not have vehicles, which we all find very hard to believe. There are no amenities near this development and will require proper transportation to get around on a daily basis. Furthermore, there is no crosswalk or traffic light located on 32nd, which is also an extremely dangerous corner with visibility issues on Granville Street. I believe the neighbors within the surrounding blocks of the project are greatly impacted by such a development and should a major consideration by council's verdict. After reviewing the city correspondence, it became very apparent that out of 226 supported votes, only 12 were actual residents of Shaughnessy. Meanwhile, 136 out of the 220 opposed votes are actual residents of Shaughnessy. More than half of the supporting votes are from unknown locations. I believe those numbers should be a strong consideration for council. In summary, I would be supportive of a much smaller rental development at this location that would fit nicely in with the surrounding homes and would encourage council to reconsider the current application sheer size and density. I strongly believe the surrounding neighbors would definitely have a stronger voice in consideration as it greatly affects us all. I will quickly finish with a question for Mayor and Councillor. A colleague of ours, Rick Michaels, was unable to speak yesterday due to family matters. However, I understand that he submitted an email that he shared with us and staff. Hopefully it was made into your packages. If not, I can provide it to you or if I can have permission, I can read it onto the record. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much for your time. You just have just a few, 30 seconds left, so I would suggest with the information that you have, if you could email us, if you could email it to us from your friend.
Yeah, I wouldn't be able to relay Rick Michaels' statement within 30 seconds, so it's already been emailed, so we just wanted to ensure that you guys received it.
That's right, okay, thanks very much. You do have a question though, from Councillor Kirby Young, thank you. Councillor Kirby Young, go ahead. You have up to five minutes.
Hi there, thanks for being here. A couple of questions to follow up to what you said. You had mentioned that you would be more supportive of a different form such as town homes and I also heard you say that you weren't supportive of spot rezoning. Would you be more supportive of pre-zoning a full area of Granville Street for a townhouse form as an alternate?
Excuse me, I'm going to try to answer this one. I believe that the heritage area of Vancouver, or sorry, Shaughnessy is quite important for the area, so I just personally, I believe in a lesser scale it'd be okay. I just don't think the whole Granville Strip should be townhomes. I think that will dramatically affect the whole overall area and the feeling personally.
Okay, so just to clarify, you would support townhomes but a limited number of them? Not say the full? We had once been suggested, for example, along Granville proper from 16th to 49th, but you're suggesting that it would be more limited in a few townhome projects or...
I suppose on, yeah, I suppose like on an individual basis, I mean, we do believe in retaining heritage, so you know, if that pushes over some certain houses that are heritage-related, I don't necessarily agree with it. I think it'd be better kind of randomly placed, if that makes sense.
Okay, but if you knew that there was heritage preservation protections and place for heritage designated buildings or homes, then that wouldn't preclude that, would that make you more comfortable with townhomes as an option?
Yes, I just, yes. I believe the area will be...
Okay.
We just knock it all down and just build townhomes or buildings itself.
Right, okay. And one other question, just to understand a bit more about your perspective and your thoughts on the form and suggesting townhomes save versus what we're considering as a four-story. Staff did say when they presented this one that there's efforts made that it be as close to the RS 5 height as possible, so to the existing height of building, so is it the form that you object to more than the height? Just want to understand that a little bit more.
Yeah, I just believe that the massing is just too large for that area. I just think it's going to greatly affect a lot of aspects of that neighborhood. So I mean, yes, the height is a little bit too tall for the neighborhood because I think it'll tower over the shrubs. I think it'll be quite noticeable driving down Granville Street, just like all the other buildings that are tall. But I also do, I do think there's just too many units within that building for that area that can handle.
Okay, so it's density that really...
Yeah, I think mostly it's the density and then it doesn't fit in with the RS 5 zoning in our opinion. I just think it doesn't conform with, you know, all the other requirements that everybody else has to fit in with.
Okay, that's illuminating, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Dominado, up to five minutes.
Thank you for your comments this evening. I just had a follow-up question to something you reflected to Councillor Kirby Young and I want to make sure I understood it correctly. I thought I heard you reflect that there might be some, to some degree, a devaluation of neighboring properties as a result of a development like this. Did I understand that? You talked about sort of the neighborhood assets and I just wanted to be clear, do you see this as potentially devaluing neighboring properties?
I don't believe I stated that in that speech. I do believe it can affect definitely the neighborhood, especially if there's traffic congestion and it's not controlled correctly. I do believe that it will affect things greatly. It's again, more of the massing and it's not so much the building itself, but it's more of just, you know, it's not desirable for some people to be living near these very dense areas. So I think, you know, people enjoy the area of Shaughnessy for the openness and, you know, just like other areas like Point Gray and whatnot and everything else, but I just, you know, I do believe that it does affect value, definitely. You know, not that's the overall big picture here, but it is definitely a part of it.
Thank you, and that's it for questions, Speaker. So thank you very much for calling in today. We are going to move to, let's see here, we're moving to Scott de Langboom, Speaker number 19.
Hello, Mayor and Councillor. Hello, Mayor and Councillor, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and Councillor, for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I am here to ask you to support this building because what is really under consideration, what really matters here is the 81 families who will call this building home and the 81 families that are going to come after that and the next 81. Over the life of this building, that's going to be hundreds of families who will now have a place to live if you approve this. And at its core, that's what cities really are, is the people, the buildings, the roads, the utilities, those are all things cities have, but what really makes a city a city is the people who live here. And it is the people who will live in these homes that are at stake here tonight. And the question before you tonight is, will this council welcome the hundreds of families that will call this building home to the neighborhood and to the city overall, or will it tell them they aren't welcome here and aren't wanted the way this council did a year ago when it voted against 21 townhomes just down the road? I hope this council does not make that same mistake. Every family, every person who moves to Vancouver is a benefit to us all. That's one more potential partner, a friend, a family member, an employee, a customer, startup owner, who knows how else they will contribute to the city. But the one thing they all need is a home and if they can't find one here, they'll either be locked out of Vancouver or the more well-off ones will outbid lower-income people for the existing stock of homes. As you're all aware, the rental vacancy rate is so low that this badly needed housing will help relieve the pressure on rents. As well, I just want to leave you with the thought that this building is going to be here for a long time, will likely still be standing at the turn of the next century and that as a city council, you should be aiming towards building for the future, not be remaining anchored in the past. All the calls about character or heritage or, as one person said, neighborhood prestige is ultimately called for a city that is stagnating, that doesn't build, that doesn't advance itself. And we should all aim to leave a very better place than it was before we arrived in the city and that means continuing to build for the future. And a project like this, well, one small step towards that is nevertheless an important step. So for those reasons, I urge you to please vote to unanimously support this project. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thanks for phoning in this evening. You don't have any questions from council, so just glad you were able to participate tonight and I'm going to move on to the next speaker. We have Tom Davidoff. Speaker number 20, Tom Davidoff. Moderator, do we have Mr. Davidoff on the line? Clerks, have we still in contact with the moderator?
Your worst, sorry, Mayor Stewart, he doesn't seem to be responding to you, so we are checking, it appears maybe there's something wrong with the connection.
Okay, counsel, I think we're back on here. I think, I think I said six fifty-three, so I'm just going to wait one minute. Clerks, are we good to go?
Mayor Stewart, the clerk here. Yes, I understand everything is good to go.
Great, thanks. So we're looking for Tom Davidoff.
I'm here.
Speaker number twenty. Great, thanks so much for calling in. And great, up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Sure. I'll take that little hiccup as a sign from above that I can start the way I meant to, which is to say, sorry, that it is easier for a camel to go through the eye of a needle than for a rich man to enter the kingdom of God, something some of the speakers might keep in mind. Okay, so this is a great project. I wouldn't normally call in, but I think this is a fantastic project. It's eighty-one homes on two lots, so that's, you know, seventy-nine more households than would normally fit in Shaughnessy zoning, which means roughly eighty-one more people or households get to live in Vancouver. You know, that helps affordability. That is more homes than there would be without this project. And of course, we do need more homes. You know, it's true, if you look backwards, household growth has not been that great over Vancouver over the last two decades, but that's because of restrictive zoning such as in Shaughnessy. Prices and rents have gone bananas, so you don't need to do a long study to figure out that there's a housing affordability problem. The very problem is there aren't enough units for people to live in. So, you know, I did want to address a few of the complaints that have been made about this project. One is, you know, traffic and particularly parking. That is a very easily solved problem. Just add meters and charge residents for permits. As you know, they can certainly afford a couple hundred bucks a year for, for permits and then you'll have no problem with street parking. Property values, you know, work I've done with colleagues suggests, yes, the neighboring property values will fall a little bit, but, you know, of course, these properties are already ridiculously expensive. And if you care about adjoining property values, okay, then the answer is not to throw eighty-one people out of Shaughnessy. The answer is to let many, 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 many more people into Shaughnessy. You know, what this project shows is it is trivial to multiply the number of households in Shaughnessy by a factor of fifty. It's easy. This is a very, very low FSR. I grew up in a beautiful neighborhood of 1.5 FSR townhomes that were built in eighteen ninety. And today, that neighborhood where I grew up is costs about as much as Vancouver does. So we're a hundred thirty years behind the times at this project. You know, you saw what happened on Burke Street. You saw what happened near Burrard Bridge with the Musquiam. People would build to an FSR of ten if they wanted to maximize property values, certainly to five. This is barely even a compromise and you're multiplying population by fifty. If you take seriously getting the most out of land values in Shaughnessy, then allow something like the density that developers would build if they were left to their own devices. Okay? So great project, you know, inconveniences a very small number of neighbors because of the very silly underzoning and deal with parking with permits and deal with property values by actually being serious about zoning generally in the neighborhood.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Thanks for, okay, thank you. I have some, a couple of questions for you. Mr. Davidoff, could you just give us a sense of your professional background?
Yes. I am a housing economist. I teach at the Soder School of Business at UBC. You know, I've done a variety of advising council of economic advisors in the US, ad hoc advisory roles here in BC and a bit with federal entities.
Could you tell us a little bit about your training?
Yeah, sure. I did a undergrad degree at Harvard in social studies, went back to work in real estate development for three years in Brooklyn, New York, got a Masters of Public Affairs and Urban Planning at the Woodrow Wilson School, whoops, no longer at the Woodrow Wilson School, at Princeton University, it has a new name, and then got a PhD joint in urban planning and economics at MIT where I was fortunate enough to train with, you know, the great Bill Wheaton, the urban economist, Nobel Prize winner Peter Diamond and Jim Paterba, both of whom study public finance.
Okay, thanks. And, and you think this type of development, this project is, is what would be both beneficial to this area and to the city at large?
Well, absolutely. I mean, the one thing I'll say is it's not dense enough. I mean, 1.5 FSR. One way I like to think about what's best for the city is to do a little bit of a thought experiment. Suppose you had a monopolist, sort of like the UBC Property Trusts, a lot like the Musquiam who owned a lot of the Senakwa land, and think about what they would build if they controlled a whole neighborhood, right? What density would they choose to make as much money as possible? Now, what they'd be doing is maximizing the value of the land. And what the land represents is how many people are going to live there, times how much is each party willing to pay for the land, which is a reasonable measure of enjoyment. The reason you have restrictive zoning, the reason it exists is to say, okay, well, you know, if you build it too great of a density, then property values start to fall. But zoning that makes land values fall, well, there's no justification for that. Zoning only makes sense, you know, restrictive exclusionary, no renters allowed type zoning, you know, that, that Trump advocates. That only makes sense if it's increasing property values. If it's decreasing property values, you're doing a rare combination of two things. You're both reducing overall economic efficiency, sort of making the pie smaller, and you're transferring resources from the poor to the rich. So, single-family, large lot zoning in Shaughnessy is a giant subsidy to rich people who can afford, you know, giant homes because they don't have to compete with the developers who would otherwise control the land. And, of course, it makes the neighborhood much, much more expensive. So, you know, there's no reason anywhere to zone below what a sort of hypothetical neighborhood monopolist developer would do. And it's obvious that you're so far below that level at a 1.5 or whatever this FSR this project is.
Thanks very much for your time. And you do have another question from Counsel Bly. Counsel Bly, please go ahead.
Thanks very much, Mayor. Hi, Mr. Davidoff. Thank you for joining us.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for having me.
Um, I appreciate your, your back, your academic background is primarily in the economics of housing, but I, I wonder if you could comment in, because I think what we've heard from some speakers is sort of a, um, an assessment of what happens in neighborhoods when renters move in. And I, this might be a better question for a sociologist, but I just wonder if you could comment at all in terms of how the demographic of renters has changed and certainly in Vancouver, and to the, to the, to the limitation of, that you can comment based on the data and research of what people can expect from neighborhoods that invite renters in, where they've typically been exclusively homeowners.
Well, well, that's a great question. And, you know, there's one major study that people, with which people are very familiar by two people, Ed Glazer, a very well-known urban economist, and a co-author Denise Di Pasquale. And they did find homeowners are more active in their communities, more engaged, et cetera. But they, and I just heard a, a paper, you know, you know, discussion of this very issue. And, you know, in an Israeli context with some more experimental data, you know, they found there is a bit more, people do well when they're given the opportunity to own homes. But you do have this problem, of course, that homeowners are more affluent and, you know, better connected to the neighborhood just because, you know, you choose to buy a house if you're going to be there for a long time. But, you know, I, I do think there is some, some evidence, but that's, you know, the evidence we're talking about is general population. When you're talking about people paying three thousand dollars a month, as you suggest, obviously, you know, this is not, you know, the stereotype of renters who are going to damage the neighborhood somehow, you know, it's, it's very different. Vancouver's a different context because it is so expensive to own. Obviously, you move up the socio-economic spectrum as a renter and, you know, we all know very well compensated professionals who struggle to find a rental and can't, can't have a hope of coming to put the down payment.
Right. Okay. I really appreciate your comments there. Thanks so much.
Thank you. And that's it for questions this evening. I really appreciate you calling in. Thanks again.
Thank you.
And we're going to move on to Richard Murray, speaker number twenty-one.
Hello, can you hear me?
And we can. And you have up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Richard Murray and I've been in Vancouver my whole life, growing up in Carers on the west side and currently living in East Vancouver. I've definitely seen the market and demographic shift and seen how that affects people's ability to live in the areas they once grew up and made roots in. But right now, I'm just going to speak briefly and specifically about one demographic of the population in need of rental housing, and that's seniors. I know there's a lot of talk about families moving in, but I think that seniors definitely need to be considered in this, especially with this area, because there are very limited housing options for seniors and downsizers in the proposed area. And it's difficult for long-term residents who have contributed to the community to downsize within their neighborhoods. I experienced this firsthand with my mom, who became a widower in her seventies. And when she found herself in a situation where she was alone and looking for a place to live, she definitely wanted to rent. She did not want to own because she really couldn't manage the maintenance and upkeep that a home would require of her as a solo owner. So renting really was the option she really needed to turn to. And she also wanted to be close to her grandchildren and also closer to her friends. So this type of project should council opt to allow it, to proceed. Will deliver opportunities for residents to find new homes in the area, providing rental and accessible housing options for seniors and empty nesters looking to downsize, just like my mom was. So, yes, please consider the many people in the community who are aging and would benefit from homes like these in the future, and I hope to see it approved by councils. Thank you very much for the opportunity to share my comments.
Thank you for calling in. There's no questions for you. I appreciate you participating. And now we're on to Brienne Sampson, speaker number twenty-two.
Hi there. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Brienne Sampson. I'm also a resident of Vancouver. I just wanted to call in to say I strongly support the proposal to build the new purpose-built rental housing at forty-seven fifty Grandville. As so many have expressed already, homeownership is not attainable for many people living and working in Vancouver. This is why I feel it's really important to create access to secure rental housing in close proximity to transit and shops, education and employment opportunities. If this proposal is approved, it would see the introduction of more than eighty secured rental units in Shaughnessy. This would be suitable for working professionals, nurses, allied health professionals at VGH and women's and children's hospitals. This also includes teachers working at one of the many schools nearby, York House, Little Flowers, St. George's, Shaughnessy. Finding affordable housing and quality housing for teachers and healthcare professionals is a constant challenge for Vancouver Westside schools. I myself am an occupational therapist and I'm aware of so many colleagues who are looking for rental options to be able to work closer to the places that, where they are employed, but often are commuting long distances to get to and from work. So forty-seven fifty Grahamville would provide local housing options for these people that provide critical care and education and support services to our community, particularly in the community that, in some ways, is aging. While this project is not large in scale, it certainly is a step in the right direction. Thank you so much for your time and for your consideration.
Thank you, thank you for your time, for calling in. I don't see, let me just double check here. I don't see any questions for you, so I'm going to move on to the next speaker. And just thank you for participating tonight. We have Peter Waldkirk, speaker number twenty-three.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead whenever you're ready.
Great, thank you. Mayor and Council, my name is Peter Waldkirk. I'm here to speak in support of these homes. What you have before you is an opportunity, an opportunity to allow for more homes in Shaughnessy. I urge you to take it because this is actually really a simple question. Are you going to let people who can't necessarily afford to buy large estates live in Shaughnessy? Or will you defend the planning that keeps this area of our city as a virtual gated community? Those are your only two choices today. Supporting planning that reserves the area of the city for mega mansions that cost many millions of dollars or allow renters to move in. Counselors, I urge you to think realistically. A vote against this will accomplish nothing other than entrench the status quo, a status quo that desperately needs to be shaken up. Shaughnessy occupies prime land. The railway barons who created it knew that well. It is close to downtown in the heart of the entire metro region. In fact, Shaughnessy is almost as big as all of downtown or Stanley Park. And yet, we use the force of law to make it so that nothing is allowed to be built there except extremely expensive mansions. Is that the system you want to defend? The last time there was a proposal for rental housing in Shaughnessy, some counselors with respect did not think realistically. They seemed to think that by voting against those rentals, it would somehow result in more affordability, but that wasn't the choice. Their vote against those rentals was a vote for the status quo. And that's what we're getting, another twelve thousand square foot mansion instead of twenty-one homes for families. Some other counselors opposed that proposal because it was next to a hospice. They said they weren't against allowing more housing in Shaughnessy, they were just against that specific proposal because of a hospice. Well, that's not the situation here. And the city is watching to see if you really meant that. So this time, the choice is clear, and I hope you appreciate what it is. Two mansions or eighty-one secured rental homes. And if this is rejected, it will be sending a clear message that this council will listen to wealthy voices and give them a veto over new housing. For decades, we have put all new housing in a few neighborhoods, like Fairley, where I live. Meanwhile, the population of Shaughnessy has actually been decreasing. That cannot continue. Every neighborhood must accept growth and change. I have heard virtually all counselors say that. This is your chance to show that they are more than just empty words. I also want to quickly observe what a ridiculous system we have. Once again, we are spending hour upon hour of extremely expensive and valuable public time bickering over a single rental apartment. This feels like a system designed to produce a housing shortage. Buildings like this should be buildable as of right without a rezoning across the city in should be buildable as of right without a rezoning across the city in every neighborhood, yes, even in Shaughnessy. So I ask you, listen to what the opponents are saying. Read the letters they wrote, and ask yourself if those are the attitudes you want to use your power to defend and entrench. Last night, you heard an opponent of this project say, and I quote, "When you're an owner, you have a far greater impact and care more for the neighborhood than you would if you're a renter." Is that a view this council wishes to endorse? This is an opportunity for something different. I urge you to take it. Do you want to be a counselor known for defending the status quo, or one who embraces a future for our city? Thank you.
Thanks very much for calling in tonight. And there are no questions for you, so I'll just thank you for participating. And we'll be moving on to speaker number 24, Mike Ben.
Mike Ben actually just dropped shortly while I think Peter was speaking.
Okay.
So the next one we actually have is 27.
Okay. Right. So we don't have Clement Chung, Sean Lang, 25, 26, and we'll move on to Robert Friesen, number 27.
My name is Robert Friesen. I am a resident of Vancouver and a resident of Shaughnessy. And like most of the other residents, I'm strongly opposed to this proposal. I think that you will have received a letter from the Shaughnessy Heights Property Owners Association. I'd like to endorse the views that are in that letter, and they raise most of the points that others who are in opposition have raised. And on a personal note, just some of those, some of the points, people make light of the traffic issue, but it is a big, big problem. Shaughnessy, some people have the impression that Shaughnessy is, you know, disappearing. There's hardly anybody living there. That is a ridiculous impression. We live just one block west of Granville. We live five blocks from the proposed development. And on our side street, on any school morning, we get about 800 cars, like we know this because we counted them. And it's a huge traffic jam. A lot of the people to get from the side street to get to the three schools that are within, say, seven blocks of this proposed development, you've got a huge number of people turning left off Granville. You've got people coming from all different parts of the city to bring their children to school, because two of their schools are private schools. And as well, as you know, people can, from any part of the city, can bring their children to Shaughnessy. And there's a big segment of the population that is willing to drive to the public school just to do that as well. So for people to say that there's, traffic is a nothing issue, it's bizarre what is going on on Granville Street. You've got people dropping their kids off, you know, right on Granville Street in the middle lane. When the, you know, when the traffic light turns red, all the kids pile out of the car. It's crazy. So there are very serious traffic issues that I, in addition to all the other reasons that people have mentioned, I'd like to emphasize. But my main complaint really is about the process. What I see, the whole spot zoning process seems to me to be very unfair and, you know, lacking in transparency. Some of the neighbors have done a fair bit of investigation, and it seems to us that what's happened here is that city planning staff have really colluded with this particular development.
Oh, sorry.
The developer.
Sorry. We don't want to call anybody's integrity into question, so I just caution you on that regard.
No, no, I'm not calling collusion work with. How do you, I'm not accusing anyone of doing anything illegal or improper. I'm not calling anyone's integrity into question. But as somebody's pointed out, the neighbors weren't involved in this. You've got planning officials meeting with developers, and by voting for this proposal, you're putting probably quite a few million dollars into the pocket of this developer. And that sort of thing shouldn't happen behind closed doors. It's not right. We all want to solve the problem of, the housing problem, but using a process where friends of developers or friends of planning staff get special deals, it's not right.
Uh, sir, I mean, that's, okay. Special deals for planning staff's friends is calling people's integrity into question. So you are at the end of your time, and thank you very much for participating tonight. And you have no questions. So thanks again for calling in, and I'm going to move to the next speaker now. We have number 28, Larkin McKenzie Ast.
Hi there. Hello, Mayor Stewart.
Hello.
And City Council. Hi, my name is Larkin McKenzie Ast, as you stated there a moment ago. And I'm writing to you as a business leader. I work at Coast Capital Savings Federal Credit Union. Now, after researching the rental housing project proposed for 4750 Granville Street, I'd like to state my full and strong support for this project. At Coast Capital Savings, we employ over 1,800 people, with a significant number of those people having extensive commuting times, because so many of them would like to live in Vancouver while working in Surrey. And what I like about this development is that it's a 100% rental building. There is nowhere near enough rental options in Vancouver, and this really should be a straightforward approval. We all know that to buy a home in Vancouver, in spite of how much we've heard from so many people over the last two days, but buying a house in Shaughnessy is very expensive, if not completely out of reach for most people, which is why we need more rental spaces. It's incredibly important that we retain a level of affordability and, quite frankly, diversity in our housing stock to ensure that our local community, those who work at our grocery stores, our restaurants, our coffee shops, can survive. And these small retailers are a big part of what makes our community attractive and livable. As an employer, adequate housing is always a topic for staff that we discuss regularly. Given the current housing climate, I'm always hearing stories from friends and colleagues who are struggling to find a home to live in. This project is still a few years away, so it won't actually deliver an immediate solution, unfortunately. But the more rental housing options that are built in Vancouver, the better for the long-term needs to serve the community in which we live, we work, and that I love. So I sincerely hope that the council approves this project, and, quite frankly, all the other rental projects that may be on your docket for consideration. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thanks for calling in. We don't have any questions for you, so I'm going to move on to the next speaker. We have speaker number 29, Rebecca Hartley.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Please go ahead up to five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Councilors. My name is Rebecca Hartley. I'm a resident of Vancouver, and I've called in tonight to express my support for the proposed rezoning of 4750 Granville Street and 1484 West 32nd Avenue. I know many of you Shaughnessy is an exclusive, cut-off neighborhood, but I think it's important to remember, it's just a short drive from the vibrancy of downtown, the services of the Broadway corridor, and importantly, the healthcare heroes who work at Vancouver General Hospital. I imagine that, like me, they would rather take the bus as they make their way to their future homes there, and spend the time with a good book instead of traffic. I can't stress how important it is for us to provide homes for those people, as they shouldn't have to endure a health crisis like this while wondering if they'll continue to have a future in our city. I'm fortunate to have friends of all backgrounds, and sadly, this means some have already had to leave our city and even our region. I'm not naive to believe all of them could afford to live here, but I know some would have been able to, and our city and my life is worse without their presence. I would have loved to get to know their children. And with 35% of these homes large enough for families, had this project already existed, I would have had that chance. I can only imagine how happy they would have been to explore this site's large grounds, shade a play area under the preserved trees, all while remaining buffered with a hedge from Granville Street. However, it's easy for me to look to the future, but I understand why some neighbors are more concerned about how it relates to their past contacts. I think the architecture with its clean lines and look does a great job of relating to that history. Though that's personal taste, and with the substantial amount of landscaping, it probably won't matter anyway. I understand this project has drawn some attention in light of the prior Shaughnessy rental proposal that this council turned down last year. Though I respect your right to that decision, I would like to believe this council has learned from that decision and realizes that in pursuing perfection, we create enclaves of exclusivity. Once again, you find yourselves with the decision. What message will you send by rejecting these homes? Is that a path to affordability? In my view, the approval of these homes will honor Shaughnessy's past brief brushes with affordable housing and respect the need for it to come in the future. I hope you agree and vote to support these 81 homes. Thank you.
Thanks so much for calling in. There are no questions from council for you, so we're going to move to the next speaker, speaker number 30, Daniel Olcak.
Hello, this is Daniel here, and I'm very happy to be here to speak in support of these rental homes among multimillion-dollar mansions in Shaughnessy. It's quite a remarkable opportunity to get to speak to rental homes in a neighborhood that has so effectively avoided them for so long. And I want to start actually by saying that I'm a bit dismayed that, once again, this council is considering rental apartments on a polluted arterial road, in this case Granville, instead of on a quiet tree-lined street like Nanton, Carche, Selkirk, Devonshire, Hudson, Canot, or Ossler. All of these streets are much more pleasant than Granville, and yet here we are to consider an application directly on the busiest street in the area. So while this neighborhood's full of empty parks and beautiful tree-lined streets with empty mansions, this council's policy forces this building to be on a six-lane highway. If you were to design a policy to expose as many people as possible to car pollution, this might be the one you came up with. And make no mistake, children will be more likely to get asthma because of council's policy. Cancer risk will go up, sleep will be disturbed, people will be breathing diesel fumes and break particulate matter. And other than the proximity to car pollution, I'd also like to talk about something that's come up in both this hearing and past ones, which is neighborhood character. I'd like to explore a little bit what people mean when they use this nebulous, euphemistic, and frankly equivocating concept. New York Times journalist Connor Doherty recently said that sometimes, starting around the mid-1960s, suburban governments have moved towards using terms like neighborhood character as a proxy for class and race. He says that as a matter of policy, these rules are codified through what he calls dreadfully boring and impenetrably technical rules that dictate things like height, setbacks, minimum lot size, and how many unrelated people can live there. Now, over the last few decades, we've seen home prices in Shaughnessy creep ever upwards. Multifamily development has occurred elsewhere in the city, and here we are with multiple single-family residences for sale in the neighborhood over $10 million. So I'd ask council to think about whether that's the neighborhood character that they want to be preserving. This came up last year, of course, when an application for 21 rental townhomes came up, and councilors Carr, Frye, Swanson, Hardwood, Weebly and Kirby Young voted against that project. And in that debate, councilors mentioned, for example, Carr mentioned contextual fit with the neighborhood, which he said was very important. Counselor Hardwood said that the project did not take a neighborliness approach in its design consideration. In the result, the last I've heard is that that lot is zoned for and will likely be rebuilt next to a hospice with all the ensuing construction noise as a multimillion-dollar mansion. And finally, we've heard some input in the last couple of days, today in fact, about neighborhood character from Donald Trump, the famous orange native from Long Island. And what he said was that, and I quote, "I am happy to inform all of the people living their suburban lifestyle dreams that you will no longer be bothered by or hurt financially by having low-income housing built in your neighborhood." So again, we hear a lot at this council about neighborhood character, about contextual fit within the neighborhood, and I just caution that council should be careful about adopting language like this, that it's so often been used to disguise ugly sentiments that wouldn't otherwise be given credence in a forum like this. Besides which, the current character of the neighborhood is multi-multi-million dollar mansions, and I question whether that's actually a good thing. I would, however, thank some of last night's speakers for being perfectly forthright in their disdain for renters and their desire to keep what they see as the lower classes out of their enclave. This kind of honest mimism was frankly kind of refreshing. And the idea that renters are lesser is expressed in some ways in council's policy, which limits the kind of housing that renters usually live into specific areas, generally north of 16th Avenue and on arterial roads. So I have some people disparaging renters, as we've heard, are merely expressing the same sentiment. It's actually in our policy. It's hard to blame them for voicing a position that's actually in policy. So finally, the reason you should approve this building is that it's a single medium-density apartment project on a really busy six-lane road, and even so, look at all the support it's garnered. I'd say that if there are more units, if it was on quieter streets, I think you'd find even more support, even excitement. I mean, imagine families hanging out on large balconies of six-to-10-story rentals facing the huge empty parks of Shaughnessy. I think people would go wild for it. I think people really want it, and I know that it's in your power to do it. So please approve this project, but please also consider in the near future some rentals in less polluted locations nearby.
Thanks very much. There's no questions for you. Thank you for coming in, and I'm going to move to the next speaker, who is Josh Hayes. Mr. Hayes, up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Hi, Mayor and Council. My name is Josh Hayes. Thank you for the opportunity to address. I would like to share some brief comments in support of proposal to build secured rental housing at 4570 Granville Street. This proposal, should you allow it to proceed, will bring 81 new homes to the neighborhood. This housing type in tenure will benefit a diverse group of people, including those who currently live in the area, when they wish to downsize, and those looking for a home in the neighborhood. This can include teachers at one of the many schools nearby, or healthcare providers at one of the two hospitals. I know many people who'd be interested in rental housing at this location. I am one of them. I grew up in the neighborhood. I currently can't afford to buy a home in the neighborhood, but I'd like to stay in the area where I grew up, and I'm currently renting, in Carersdale. Access to housing is restricted in Shaughnessy to the wealthiest members of our society, who can afford to purchase large, single-family homes here. This is not what Vancouver needs, nor is it reflective of the majority of our population. We need rental housing, and we need it everywhere. Please vote in favor of this project. Thank you.
Sorry, Mayor and Council, just talking to myself there. Thanks very much for calling in.
Thank you.
And we're going to move on to the next speaker. Yep, thank you. And we've got speaker number 32, Sarah Chu.
Hello there.
Hi there. Thanks for calling in.
Hi.
Up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Thank you so much, Mayor Stewart and councilors. My name's Sarah Chu, and I'm writing in support of the rental housing project submitted by Stuart Howard Architects at 4750 Granville Street. I would like to see it approved at this hearing. As someone who works in a field associated with healthcare in Vancouver, I hear regularly about the lack of rental housing situated close to hospitals and healthcare facilities. A building dedicated to additional rental inventory for the city would be ideal for the thousands of nurses, doctors, interns, and healthcare staff who work in Vancouver. The difficulties that come with finding family-sized rental homes in Vancouver, and on the west side in particular, create a barrier to attracting and retaining talented medical professionals. I also have two elementary-school-aged children who attend school in Vancouver. The difficult housing situation I previously mentioned that is affecting healthcare workers is also an issue for other essential workers such as teachers. We need to ensure a spectrum of housing options for these specialized professionals to ensure that our children continue to receive excellent education. Shaughnessy is centrally located in the city and is therefore an excellent location for this rental building, and it's also situated on major transit routes. I support this project, and I also encourage the city to approve other developments of this nature in the future. Thank you.
Thanks so much for calling in. Don't have any questions for you. So again, appreciate you participating tonight. I'm going to move on to the next speaker now.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to move... I'm going to move on to the next speaker now, and we have Norman Bishop, speaker number thirty-three. Oh. Do we have Norman Bishop on the line? Moderator, do we have Norman Bishop on the line?
Yes, I'm just trying to open his line, but he did have some echo. I think he had the meeting in the background.
Right.
Yeah, that's the door we're getting.
Perhaps you can, perhaps you can help him as I move on to the next speaker, which would be Riley Dewer.
Actually, he called through two lines, so I just opened up his second line and there is no echo.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Okay, great. Mr. Bishop, yes.
Hello.
Hi, thanks. Please go ahead. Hi there, up to five minutes. No problem.
All right, thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Stewart and council. I used to own and live at forty-seven-fifty Granville Street for a little over nine years. My wife and I started this project and sold our property to Domus last year so that they could see this across the finish line with their professional skillset, and I am in support of this project. Growing up in a family that rented in North Vancouver for over fifty years, I've found some of the comments and perceptions of renters espoused during this process derogatory and insulting. Renters can have as much pride in their homes as property owners, and they make for very good neighbours. My experience living in Shaughnessy was it is a fantastic and lovely neighbourhood, but a very quiet one, with relatively empty streets, certainly zero parking issues, very large homes with large lots, few young families, and with what a lot of what appeared to be empty homes. The noise factor changes dramatically the closer you live to Granville Street, which is basically a six-lane highway. However, the great thing about Granville Street is that you can catch a bus without waiting longer than ten minutes, catch a cab, usually much faster than that. I love the proximity of the neighbourhood because I could get to Main Street about as fast as I could get to Kids Beach. The airport was a twenty-dollar cab ride away, and it was easy to get downtown using public transportation. The light bulb really went on for my wife and I when our youngest daughter was going through the Tred outdoor education programme at Prince of Wales High School. During a project that measured one's environmental footprint, she ranked the worst out of the sixty-odd kids in her term. The differentiating factor between her and the other classmates was the lot size we lived on, with only five family members. I have no skin in the game, like my previous neighbours do regarding lot valuation. I sold the lot last year, and its value is of no consequence to me anymore. The main reason that I support this project is that the city badly needs densification and affordability. The fact is that Shaughnessy is a low-density neighbourhood with a decreasing population that features very large lot sizes. It has the main thoroughfare Granville Street running right through it, so I can't think of a better place to situate an attractive rental complex. My wife and I have three daughters, and I would love them to have the opportunity to rent and live in the same neighbourhood in which they grew up. All of them are in their twenties now, and none of them own their own vehicle, which is fairly typical of millennials, and the fact that some of the members of the Shaughnessy community may be out of touch with based on their comments during this process. In my opinion, neither house being replaced with this development are architecturally significant or have particular street appeal or heritage. Ours was renovated in the nineteen-eighties, and the new development is considerably more attractive than either of these houses. Because of the large size of these lots, there are only three houses on this entire block. I also think that a four-story structure like this will help with the loud street noise from Granville, and could act as a nice sound barrier protecting the homes a little further away from the street. Devonshire Park, which is two blocks away from this proposed development, is a wonderful and completely underutilised park. It would be nice to see children playing there again as perhaps they did in the seventies and eighties. The shops in South Granville are a short bus ride or a fifteen-minute walk away. With the rental vacancy rate in Vancouver hovering around one percent, the most effective tool to lower rental prices is increased supply. Vancouver badly needs more unique rental products, and where else can you replace two homes with an eighty-one unit building without exceeding four stories? I trust that the mayor and council will act on their mandate of increasing rental affordability in Vancouver by supporting this well-thought-out and aesthetically attractive project. Thanks very much for your valuable time.
Thanks very much for calling in. You do have a question from councillor Carr. Councillor Carr, please go ahead, up to five minutes.
Yes, thanks very much, and thank you so much, Mr. Bishop, for coming in. I have a question that arises out of the initial introduction of this application or project by the applicant. And remember that he noted that it kind of started with the idea of, I guess sixteen Shaughnessy homeowners wanting to downsize. Were you part of that group that meant originally?
No, sixteen, I'm not even sure what you're talking about. Sixteen Shaughnessy home people that wanted to downsize?
Owners?
No, but my wife and I did, no, my wife and I did want to downsize, and we started on this project just with our own lot. And then when we, when we sold it to Domus, they were able to secure the lot next door, which I believe at the time was a city initiative to make the, make the project more of a proper scale for the, for the, for the location.
Great, okay. And having been a Shaughnessy resident, I'm wondering if you, you yourself have said that you are and your wife are interested in downsizing, and is that, is that some, you know, an attitude or a desire that's shared amongst other people that you knew as Shaughnessy residents?
Yeah, not only Shaughnessy residents, but just people of our age. You know, we're mid-fifties, we've got an empty nest now, you know, we're roaming around a large home, and it makes no sense. And so we downsized and bought a property in Kitsilano instead, much smaller, eighteen-hundred square feet, much more comfortable for two people. And if a product, you know, we're lucky enough to be able to afford a down payment, but growing up, you know, a renter, I think that this project is a fantastic product for people to be able to stay in this neighbourhood and be able to live in, you know, appropriate-sized accommodation and do it through rental.
Yep, great, thank you. I really appreciate you taking the time to be here to outline that for us. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, and that's all the questions for you. I really appreciate you calling in this evening, thank you. We're going to move to speaker number thirty-four, Riley Dewer.
An email reminder was sent, and a courtesy call was made, but they haven't joined.
Thanks very much. Can we move on to Angie thirty-five, speaker thirty-five, Angie Herata?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Great, thank you.
Something went wrong with the line. Let me try again.
Hello?
Okay.
Yes, you can go ahead.
Oh, hi, Ms. Herata.
Hello? Oh, I see, I think she's giving an option. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Angie Herata. I'm a resident and homeowner in Vancouver, and I'm in support of this project. A lot of people have, I've been listening a little bit yesterday, I didn't get the chance to everybody, but I hear a lot of people talking about more affordable housing, whether for their kids, younger generation in general, or maybe new people moving to Vancouver. And of course, everybody knows that hard-working couples in good jobs still feel like they can't afford to live in Vancouver. I know other people have mentioned not wanting this area to feel like a ghost town. I know the city has made some moves like the empty homes tax to try to curb this, but what I've seen happen in response to this, from people who I know, is homeowners charging huge amounts in monthly rent. My sister-in-law looked at a three-bedroom house in that area and was asked for six thousand dollars a month in rent. My friend's neighbour's house's rent in that area has rented a whole bunch of university students because no family can afford that level of rent on their own. So this has not solved the issue. On the other side, I hear current residents saying they understand the need for more affordable housing, but they don't want it in their own backyard. So what I want to share is a higher-level perspective, is that I think this is not just about creating more affordable housing or creating more community. There's a bigger movement right now in the world around being more inclusive and giving more people equal opportunities and access. And the reality of Shaughnessy is that it has been exclusive to those privileged with old money and new or international money, but has not been accessible to the average person's money today. So I urge you to think about whether it's, isn't it time to open the doors a little bit, allow people of other demographics and backgrounds to integrate into these neighbourhoods? And isn't it time to bring about more diversity and inclusivity in this neighbourhood? I urge you to make room for new people, whether it's immigrants or the new generation, and give opportunity to them in this area. I know that change is hard for the current residents who want to see this status quo, but change has to happen, and growth is inevitable, so it needs to be managed and more inclusive. And I hope the city of Vancouver creates the same opportunities for the next guard as it did for the previous generation. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thanks, I don't see any questions for you, so I'm going to move on to the next speaker. Thanks so much for participating. We have speaker number thirty-six, Jeff Hebdenham.
Hi, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, I can. Hi, up to five minutes, whenever you're ready.
Okay, great, thanks. Hi, my name is Jeff Hebdenham. Excuse me, I live in Vancouver, and I'll be speaking in opposition to this development. It seems to me that you've already rejected this proposal three times. You've scrapped the AHC, the policy under which this is being floated. You've deemed this strip of Granville inappropriate for multifamily housing because it's too far from amenities. We see this in the secured rental policy for low-density transition areas map. And the majority of you voted against the hospice development across the street citing context, character, and neighbourhood support among your reasons. I hope you stay true to those principles because in that regard, this is at least three times worse. I'd like to talk about the AHC policy under which this is being weaponized, because I don't believe it fits into the policy. It was meant to be a traditional, transitional rather, plan introducing density into a low-impact way. It talks about ground-oriented forms and lists townhomes, rowhouses, and coachhouses, and for the first five years, there's no mention of four-story apartment buildings. But the developer keeps saying that the city is driving this form. The city wants four stories, and there's a timeline to back that up. The developer bought this property on May twentieth, two thousand and eighteen, and twelve business days later, city staff adds and four-story apartment buildings into the policy report, which went to an appendix in the final year extension of the AHC. I wonder if the previous council was made aware of this change or debated the impact. I can send you a copy of the minutes, but it's, it's mentioned in the motion, it's not mentioned in the motion, it's simply an extension with a copy in the appendix. Now, I think Norman Bishop just told us that the, this was a city initiative to upzone this particular location, so I guess that clears that up, and tough luck for the neighbours. In the referral report, they tried to pivot the discussion of character, context, and heritage onto Granville Street. They say there's no pre-nineteen-forty buildings on this strip of Granville, so we don't have to worry about context and heritage. Well, there happens to be a hundred-year-old heritage house next door. This project's going to be part of second Shaughnessy, that's the neighbourhood. Fan out in any direction, five hundred to a thousand metres, and half the houses will be built before nineteen-forty, and the other half will then subject to R-five zoning that requires they build in the context and character of the neighbourhood. This building is a massive, modern, flat-roofed building that looks like it should be student housing at UBC. Lanket or lumpet architecturally, it does not in any way fit into the shape or form of the context of the neighbourhood. After seeing the renderings and shadow studies, I wasn't surprised to hear the developer cry poor to councillor Frye last night about the DCL waivers, nor was I surprised to see him frame his meeting with the neighbours as a give-and-take. He's brushed off every request and doesn't appear to have any intention of making any changes. As for community support, I think we can agree from the counts last night that this has been a landslide for Shaughnessy residents weighing in against this development. This is the community most affected. But almost every speaker I've heard has said, "How about townhomes?" This isn't all or nothing. This isn't us against them. This is about finding solutions. Surely a bunch of family-friendly two-to-three-bedroom townhomes is a better fit for the location and more compatible with the neighbourhood. That kind of form might house a similar number of people. Eighty-one tiny units miles from anywhere doesn't suit young people, downsizers, or families. The distance from amenities to put, the distance from amenities will put a hundred-plus cars on the road daily into perpetuity, which is a carbon emissions disaster. Nobody seems to care, but it will also devalue the surrounding homes. This is not a debate about the housing crisis, and it's not a debate about which form makes the developer the most money. It's a debate about whether this development fits into the policy and the neighbourhood, and it's a hard no to both. Make no mistake, people are angry. Everyone I've spoken to in the extended neighbourhood is shocked at how fast this is moving and appalled at the size of the development. Homeowners face massive tax bills and feel like their concerns are being swept under the rug. This is a bad deal for the city. It's not the noble pursuit of affordable housing. It's a loophole for a developer to avoid paying fees. That's bad city planning and it's bad business. I urge the city not to pick sides and bend the rules to determine, to the detriment of those most affected. I urge the city to pump the brakes on this kind of rezoning, reject this proposal, and refer all of these spot zonings to the Vancouver Plan. Thank you.
Thanks so much. That's it for, oh, councillor Hardwick has questions for you, sir. Please go ahead. Councillor Hardwick, up to five minutes.
Good evening, sir. I have a lot of questions, so let's go through this quickly if we can. Let's go back to the H.C. You stated that you felt that, that you heard that this was a city initiative. Could you elaborate on that, please?
I think Norman Bishop just said that that was the case. I feel like it's, it's, it goes without saying that developers and city planners talk to each other about things. And it sounds to me like it's just been confirmed that this was a city initiative to upzone it, but I think that should be investigated because I feel like this neighbourhood was exposed to this, and if they specifically targeted this stretch of Granville, then that doesn't seem right. People should be concerned about the process. And I don't know, that would be something you'd have to look into. It was the previous council, and so somebody who was on the council previously, like councillor Carr perhaps, might remember whether or not they were advised about this extra story and the impact, because it's a huge impact and it should have been debated.
So the goalpost is, has shifted, is what I'm hearing from you. But further to that, all of this is predicated on a certain set of underlying assumptions in the policy, and the assumptions being that there is a housing crisis and a rental shortage, which is what's amplifying all of this and asking it to be rushed through because it's an emergency. So what I'm trying to get at is how that policy process has changed in the way that this particular location is being addressed. So you've got some, I would personally like to see the policy that you've referenced, if I've missed anything in my analysis.
Well, it's buried on, in page thirteen, section E, where they're saying, hey, let's go ahead and do this. So, I mean, I'm not sure if you're asking me a question there.
I was asking you a question, page thirteen, section E. Thank you very much, I appreciate your input.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. There's no more questions for you, sir, so we're going to move, thanks for calling in tonight. Okay, and we're going to, uh, thanks. We're going to move on to Ashley Hebdenham, speaker number thirty-seven.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can, up to five minutes, please.
Okay, good evening. My name is Ashley Hebdenham. I live in Vancouver, and I'll be speaking in opposition to this development. Going back-to-back with my husband Jeff, he's the one who just spoke, I'll try my best not to repeat his comments. But firstly, I'd like to say that I support gentle densification in Shaughnessy, and think the way to achieve this is through low-impact infill sprinkled across many properties conforming to the context and character of the neighbourhood. Anyone with a twenty thousand square foot lot could probably fit a couple of extra structures onto their property and be delighted to have help paying the EB tax. The developments at thirteen-ten West King Edward Avenue and forty-one-oh-five Hudson Street are beautiful examples of the suitable and gentle densification that would work well in Shaughnessy. In fact, Shaughnessy is unique in this regard. The lot sizes are large enough to accommodate lane and carriage homes, duplexes, and in some cases even townhomes. The idea of placing eighty-one cramped units in a massive, modern building is disrespectful to the neighbours and to the character and context of Shaughnessy. Over fifty of the eighty-one units are going to be one-bedroom. The developer mentioned that this project is attractive to seniors and families. However, families cannot live in one-bedroom, and seniors likely will not be able to walk two kilometres to the grocery store with their shopping bag, or take a bus that requires them to transfer. The bus route from the development site to the shopping area on Okan Twenty-Fifth is not a direct line. I would like to speak about the neighbourhood consultation process and timeline. City of Vancouver policy protects neighbourhood- City of Vancouver policy protects neighborhoods from invasive developments by including context and a degree of community support. This massive eighty-one-unit development most definitely does not fit with the context of the neighborhood, nor does it have the community's support, and therefore, I'm confused as to why it was even recommended. What is even more confusing is the speed of this development. It has been moving incredibly fast and has been extremely difficult to keep up with, particularly in the face of COVID-nineteen. The open house was on March fifth, and the window for community input was closed one month later. As we all remember, this was during the first month of lockdown. There is no way for us to go door-to-door, sign petitions, and let people know what was happening because we were terrified and under public health orders to socially distance. Because this is a grassroots, community-driven opposition, most of us have no idea how to fight City Hall, how the information is being handled, or even where to send the information as there are so many links and addresses to navigate. This takes time to sort through, and we simply haven't been given much time. For example, we learned on July twenty-seventh, just the day before the hearing, the letters that we had written as a group might only count as one vote, and that the content of those letters was not sent to council. It was supposed to be summarized in the referral report, but most of us feel it didn't even begin to address the scope or tone of our concern. The referral report itself didn't come out until June twenty-first, and we're still trying to digest the information and how you're tallying votes. I feel the speed and stealth of this process aided by COVID-nineteen have made it an unfair playing field. So I wanted to read a beautiful quote from Christine Boyle, who I voted for. "The soul of any place is made up of its people, and beyond that, of its neighborhood, its culture. The soul of any place is in its history, and the way its residents shape and transform that history over time. Communities shouldn't have to be fighting against the city to protect the soul of this place. The city should be on their side. We need government to radically shift the way that civic engagement and consultation happens, to create process of deep democracy and invite these community groups in. That's how we protect and revitalize the soul of this place we love: deep engagement, deep democracy." This quote speaks to me because I feel it reflects the moment we're in right now, and I would like to see gentle densification in Shaughnessy through community consultation and engagement, and not through fighting with City Hall. And just because I've been hearing it over the last two nights, I would like to mention that it is a misnomer that Shaughnessy is not a kid-friendly area. I can tell you, there are at least a dozen children between the ages of two and twelve living in the immediate vicinity of this development, and if you walk around the neighborhood, you will see many, many children. I have also heard another speaker mentioning that Shaughnessy is a ghost town. This is also false. Shaughnessy is a quiet and private area. However, if you walk the streets in the area, you will see and hear people in abundance, out in their yards, riding their bikes, walking their dogs, and chatting to their neighbors. It can actually be quite vibrant. It may be that people are in their backyard, so you may not see or hear them from the street, but you most certainly will if you walk down the lane.
Just ten seconds.
I'd like to, okay, I'd like to close by asking council for this rejection of the application, to allow the developer time to rethink the form and character and propose something more appropriate. We have heard over the last two nights, it's not a rejection of rental housing, this developer or any sort of development on the proposed site, rather, we are hearing a rejection to this particular building. Thank you for your time.
Thanks so much for calling in. There are no questions for you, so just thank you again, and then move on to the next speaker. We have Mariana Sirinello.
Hi, good evening, can you hear me?
I can, thanks very much, and you have up to five minutes, whenever you're ready.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Hi there. I can hear you, up to five minutes, and whenever you're ready.
Yep, please. Yep. Good evening, councillors. I'm a Vancouver resident of Shaughnessy and live within three blocks of this new proposed development. We're well aware of the current housing issue and affordability issues with housing in our area and in our city. We have a large number of elderly people in our neighborhood who have lived here for long periods and currently may not be able to speak as eloquently as some of the other speakers tonight, who appear to have written pages and papers and speeches to, um, to this council in support, but have not lived in the area and are not aware of our current issues that surround us right now. Since the building of the new tech center at Children's Hospital, we've had numerous vehicles and parking issues in and around our very tight neighborhoods. And this is putting some of our elderly that live in our neighborhoods with mobility challenges at risk. We're concerned that adding this big development with large numbers of people could also add parking, traffic issues, again, putting some of our elderly at risk that live in our areas and that do come out and walk in our area. If the desire of the city is to change the zoning in this area, a more comprehensive and inclusive process should have been done. I was only made aware of this probably three or four days ago, and have not had a full time to even think about the impact that it would have. As a resident of Shaughnessy, I feel vilified by some of the comments that have been expressed this evening by some of the speakers. We are not necessarily opposed to a new development, we are looking for a more collaborative solution. It sounds like this building is an all-or-nothing deal. I would like you, council, to reconsider this development and look at some other options that may be more suitable for the area. Thank you.
Thank you so much for calling in. You don't have any questions, so just thank you for participating, and I'm gonna move on to the next speaker, Andrea Baxendale, speaker number thirty-nine, Andrea Baxendale.
Hi there, Andrea Baxendale, I'm, uh, hi. I'm a resident of Vancouver, and I was raised up two blocks away from this proposed development. My family still has a home two blocks away. We've lived in Shaughnessy for over fifty years, and I echoed, you know, some of the most recent, I am opposed, sorry, I'm opposed to this proposed development, and I echo some of the previous callers just ahead of me. I did want to touch on, you know, the, the density of the building, and from looking at the, you know, going off the website, the Vancouver website that shows the development proposal, we keep referencing homes for people, and I want to just be clear that, you know, the size of these units is very small. So we're talking about a one-bedroom, we're talking about less than six hundred square feet, and, you know, the market rental price for that is two thousand dollars a month. A two-bedroom home from seven hundred to seven hundred and fifty square feet at over three thousand dollars a month, and a three-bedroom home at less than a thousand square feet, and the market rental for that would be close to thirty-nine hundred dollars a month. Under the affordability, this to me is, is not affordable, and I find it, when we're talking about putting nurses and teachers into this development, they would fall into that less than six hundred square foot category. I think in COVID, one of the things that's really been brought to light is that we need to build livable units, not just housing and talk about one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom. It's important to understand the size of these units. These are, are small units, and they have to be small in order to fit eighty-one of them onto that property. Another thing is when we're talking about families, you know, previously, we talked about, was brought up, that there are many families in Shaughnessy. I've lived in Shaughnessy, my father lived in Shaughnessy, and I've gone to visit him. There's lots of neighbors there, there's lots of kids there. There's a Devonshire Park, which is the park reference for this proposed development, and if you go past there, people are picnicking, people are walking their dogs, people are playing with their kids in that park, it's very vibrant. The problem is that Shaughnessy School, which is the catchment school for that, is at capacity. And so it was suggested that there are two private schools that could be used for kids living in this proposed development. Both those schools are girls' private schools. The one is Little Flower Academy, that's a Catholic school, so it's an extra seventy-five hundred dollars a year, but again, it's a Catholic school. York House is another private school, and that is, you know, for elementary school starts at twenty-three thousand dollars a year. So these are not really viable for someone when we're talking about affordability issue. So it's also, you know, suggested that this is a proposed development for downsizing of elderly people, and it's again been touched on, but the closest grocery store is over a kilometer and a half away, and it's two buses. That lot, Safeway at Oak and Twenty-Fifth, is being, you know, proposed to be developed. So when that's developed, that will close down, and the Safeway that will be at Twenty-Fifth and, and Arbutus, it's actually Twenty-Ninth, so that's gonna be two buses and a walk, or you, an uphill walk back to that development, so it's not a walkable with your grocery stores. Again, in order to accommodate this building, the trees that, there are twenty-two trees on that site, seventeen of them have to come down in order to accommodate that proposed building. There's one sick tree on there, so that's sixteen trees that are gonna be taken out. The thing for the noise factor, I listened to the presentation last night, the trees are a buffer for noise, so the trees that are on that site are actually protecting that site, or the houses behind it from the noise. The building is more of an echoing factor, and we see that where there's more dense buildings, we get much more noise and much more echoing. So I'm concerned about the amount of trees coming down and the erosion of the greenery along Granville Street. The thing about the greenery is not just replacing a hedge, which will become a wall, but the greenery along Granville Street, as you come in to Vancouver, is the layering effect, trees, shrubberies, flowers, it is beautiful coming into Vancouver. We've already lost that along Oak Street and along Camby because of all the building we've done. So, you know, I think when we talk about heritage and when you talk about the things that make Vancouver that we want to save, you know, that greenery is a really important element of our city. And lastly...
And we're at the, uh...
Am I at the end?
At the five minutes.
Okay.
Yes, you are.
Don't talk too much. Okay, thanks, Mayor.
Thank you so much for, for participating. Actually, you do have a question from councillor Weeb, councillor Weeb, please go ahead.
Yeah, a couple of speakers in a row, and I think you referenced it, talked about that this isn't a good place to downsize. I'm wondering, what is the neighborhood looking for, for a space for downsizing, as well as it's always been talked about shopping as the number-one concern for walkability for people in their neighborhood? So what are the walkable areas that people are hoping to walk to, and what are people looking to downsize if this is not what the neighborhood's looking for?
Well, I think in Shaughnessy right now, Shaughnessy's doing an amazing job of downsizing, and, you know, there's, they're building the laneway houses, and families are actually renovating and doing new builds that are multi-generational. So it may not be a traditional downsize, but you've got multi-generational families living in a home, so they're sweeting those homes so that they have, you know, you know, a family upstairs or downstairs with the, with the parents in another level, or they're adding a laneway house onto the property so that the, the, you know, the parents can live in the, in the laneway house. And I think that's, you know, and that's happening throughout Shaughnessy, so I think it goes back to that, um, idea of, of spreading out the density rather than having a one-large, dense property, you know? They, these things are happening in Shaughnessy right now, within the limits that the city will allow us to do it.
And in, and in those spaces, there's no concerns of people walking to the grocery store and other things?
Well, I think that what happens with that kind of downsizing is you have the built-in support, because you have the family's support there, so you have the ability to, you know, have the children or the grandkids help out and do the shopping and help with the shopping, so you're not relying on somebody putting someone into a home, isolating them by themselves, and having to be so self-reliant.
Okay, thanks for speaking.
Thank you so much for answering your questions and calling in, and gonna move on to the next speaker now, which is number forty, Chris Gustafson.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Chris Gustafson, and I live a block away on West Thirty-third from this proposed rezoning application and development. I'm a born and raised resident Vancouverite and acknowledge the traditional ancestral and unceded territory of the Coast Salish peoples, the Squamish, Slewahtuhtu, and Musqueam nations, on which we are virtually meeting tonight. Again, I am a registered nurse focused on accreditation, quality, and safety in healthcare. My position is that I am against and oppose the recommendation for this rezoning, and here is my rationale. This application was made under the Affordable Housing Choices interim rezoning policy, a now-expired policy, and the city has other rental incentive programs and policies such as Rental One Hundred and the Moderate-Income Rental Housing Pilot Program, to name just two. And to be honest, it is confusing to weed through the various applications and variations of pilot programs and zoning options and opportunities for developers that should be thoroughly evaluated, streamlined, sharing lessons learned, and avoiding the pitfalls prior to repeating potential mistakes. Certainly, that is how the Model for Improvement, a conceptual model to enhance organizational performance, which I use regularly, works, to plan, do, study, and act. I am concerned that this application and these approaches, like having spot and interim zoning, creates a disconnected-looking and feeling neighborhood and city, and leads to distrust of the city council and mayor. If instead of using all four elements of the Model for Improvement of plan, do, study, act, you just plan and do, and plan and do and do, you can get into do-do without carefully studying and adjusting actions. It's important for our city's governance and leadership to make sound decisions in order to be trusted, to fulfill their oath of office, be valued and credible to the citizens of Vancouver, and beyond. I attended the well-attended, in our pre-COVID times, community open house held at Van Tuzen Botanical Gardens on March fifth, and I am concerned that the feedback from that session and detailed comment sheets have not been shared adequately. Zoning plat, planning staff have admitted errors, and I believe that there are flaws in how public input and consultation is sought and used by the council. The International Association for Public Participation Spectrum includes five options, starting from the low end of inform, to consult, involve, collaborate, and empower. And my experience with various open houses and opportunities hosted by the city feels like Vancouverites are kept barely at the informed, not even consulted, level. For example, not clearly demonstrating how public input influenced the decision, and not the involved level of the spectrum, which would see citizens directly reflected in the alternatives developed. This proposed application on the corner of a side street, West Thirty-second at forty-seven-fifty Granville Street, does not meet a key criteria that staff are expected to review, that there is building form and neighborhood fit. A multi-story eighty-one-unit building on the grounds where two single-family homes currently stand is not in keeping with the Heritage Action Plan of Vancouver for the Shaughnessy area. More and bigger is not always better. If we have learned anything with our COVID experiences, it is to shift to consider detached homes, or at least housing with reduced shared common spaces. The applicants last night described their design to encourage interaction with building neighbors. Researchers have made a number of recommendations to city council over the years to densify neighborhoods with townhouses and smaller buildings, which would make more sense taking infection prevention control and retention of character into account. I, like everyone who has spoken both for and against this proposal, am truly interested in seeing densification in Vancouver, as I have three sons, who I hope will choose to live in Vancouver. While very important, the inclusion of rental units for people on moderate incomes does not justify this project's scale. This taller and larger building, especially on this size of land parcel, will create a loss of green space, loss of views, will not create affordable housing, and will negatively impact property values for owners in the neighborhood. Traffic, walking, and biking issues, such as using adjacent narrow side streets and the back lane as thoroughfares, are a serious potential concern if the development is approved and the volume of people and all forms of traffic grows exponentially. To quote you, Mayor Kennedy Stewart, from a council meeting last week, "You can say no to projects you don't want. As elected officials, you have an obligation and service to the public, and I encourage you to say no to this application, allowing for the gentle density councillors and speakers have described yesterday and today." Thank you.
Thank you so much for calling in. Thank you so much for, uh, calling in and, uh, you don't have any other questions, so just wanted to thank you for participating. Uh, we're under our last registered speaker, uh, number forty-one, Stuart Smith.
Hi there.
Hi, up to five minutes. Yes, again, whenever you're ready.
Thanks. Um, thank you, Mayor and council, for the opportunity to speak today. Uh, my name is Stuart Smith. I'm on the board of Abundant Housing Vancouver, kind of speaking in support of making it legal to have secure purpose-built rental in Shaughnessy at four seven fifty Granville, but also every other shape, size and tenure of housing legal by right on every lot, every block and every neighbourhood in the city. The reason we should support this proposal tonight is not because it's made of ponies and rainbows, it will be all things to all people. It's because it will work for eighty-one households who can't afford to buy a detached house rather than the one or two who can. It's because eighty-one renter households will contribute far more in property taxes than the one or two detached owners who might otherwise live on this land. It's because landlords of existing older affordable housing across the city will have eighty-one fewer tenants to choose from and eighty-one fewer reasons to try to rent a big, long-term rent-controlled tenant. It's because a century of misguided land use policy has created a neighbourhood that cannot house its children, its children's children or its children's children's children and instead sends them off to gentrify other neighbourhoods. An additional eighty-one households won't reverse Shaughnessy's twentieth-century decline. But we have to start somewhere, so let's start with this. Um, I'd like to talk a little bit about affordability, uh, because I've just heard a few comments on the line in the last few minutes. Um, I, I have to remind council that the nearest available housing to this site requires a mortgage that would cost one hundred and ten thousand dollars per month. The nearest rental options are all above three thousand dollars and they're all insecure tenants, meaning that you can be evicted anytime the owner of the home or unit decides that they want the space. Uh, so that is what we should be comparing this building to. I also heard some concerns about the view of the city as you drive to the city. Um, I think it's troubling that we would prioritise the view from a car versus whether or not people have, uh, affordable and adequate housing. Uh, however, there's an easy solution and that is to reverse city policy that says that apartments have to go on arterials. Instead, let's leave the houses on the arterials and let's put apartments everywhere else. That would neatly solve that problem. Anyways, I do have a couple of concerns. Uh, one is that if the four stories is woefully inadequate for the housing challenges we face, if twenty-eight stories is good enough for Fairview, then surely eight stories is good enough for Granville, good enough for Thirty-second Avenue and good enough for the Crescent. Every additional tenant who is able to live in Shaughnessy is one left tenant who has to squeeze themselves into the West End. Another concern is traffic and parking shared by many neighbours. However, I'm confused by the recommended solution. As far as I can tell, it seems to be people who want to drive through our neighbourhoods asking council to regulate other people and other people's housing out of a fear that both people will do what they do. The solution to traffic and parking concern is not to regulate housing use and density, it's to regulate car use and car density. It's to legalize retail and other uses throughout Shaughnessy and the city so that everyone can walk to work, pick up groceries on their way home and run into a friend to chat. Every neighbourhood in the city would benefit from having more pedestrian residents, more cycling residents and more transit residents, but no neighbourhood in the city would benefit from having more drivers. We've created an incredible apparatus in the planning department to regulate floor space down to the tenth of a square foot, yet we make no effort whatsoever to regulate how many cars are allowed on our streets. Even stranger, despite constant calls to run government like a business, we give away two hundred square feet of the city's most valuable asset, its land, asking no property tax for anyone who can move their own apartment. Let's solve traffic in Shaughnessy and across the city, turn the focus of the planning department toward limiting cars and drivers rather than housing and people. Finally, there've been a few conversations about what the community or what the neighbours think about this proposal, and I would like to urge everybody to think carefully about what it means to be a member of a community or a neighbour. One definition of community is about welcoming people, knowing that having more community members makes your community stronger, more resilient and more pleasant. Another definition of community is about pushing people away, calling them criminals, calling their housing a weapon, an assault, a monster, an impact or apparently a wort. We've heard from both of these groups today and I hope to listen to the right one. We have a big, beautiful city full of many different kinds of people with different needs and wants, at different stages of life, with different levels of income and wealth. When we pass laws that say houses over here and apartments over there, we are segregating housing by form, style and tenure. But if our needs, our wants, our income, our wealth and our age determine what kind of housing we live in, then when we segregate housing, we are segregating people by hiding it behind anodyne labels like context, fit, character or good planning. Everyone should have a reasonable expectation of being able to live cheaply, safely and securely in any part of the city, including Shaughnessy. There's no resolution to the housing crisis that uses government to enforce elite or high-end neighbourhoods. This one building will not solve Shaughnessy's troubling history of exclusion, but it's the start. Please approve this item. Thank you.
Thank you, and I don't see any questions for you, so, uh, thanks very much for, for calling in this evening. I, uh, have been alerted by the clerk that we have a speaker number twenty-six, Sean Lang on the phone.
Is that... Sean Lang on the phone? Yep, can you hear me?
I can, thanks very much. You have up to five, uh, well, actually, it sounds like you have the, it sounds like you have your radio on in the background.
Yeah. I was just listening to it on, uh, the YouTube stream. I've muted it now.
Oh, great, okay. Up to five minutes, whenever you're ready to go.
All right, uh, good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Sean Lang and this is my first time speaking to the council on this or any issue. I work in the local film industry and I've lived in Vancouver for the last five years in the Fairview neighbourhood. I've been pretty fortunate to live in a relatively affordable studio suite during this time, but as rents around me continue to rise, I wonder if I'll be able to put down any real roots in the city, say buy a condo, get married, have children and, you know, just continue to live and work in Vancouver, the city I love. One of the biggest problems facing affordable housing in this part of the country is the severe lack of rental housing supply. There are far more prospective renters than there are apartments for them. Part of the reason for this is the hopelessly outdated and frankly discriminatory existing zoning policy that turns nearly every attempt to densify the region into a, some kind of drawn-out battle between those seeking to build and existing residents who seem opposed to anything more than single dwellings or sometimes laneway houses. I've grown increasingly frustrated, not only at these elements who seek to oppose newcomers into their neighbourhoods, whether they be those with blue-collar jobs, post-secondary students, refugees, young families or even young professionals like myself, just trying to get a foothold. I've been equally frustrated with the city council who, even after ascending to office following an election in which the number-one issue with a bullet was the housing crisis, they still seem to find it difficult to make the decisions necessary to ensure that future generations can live, work and grow here. Now, some of you on council may be concerned that not every apartment will be affordable. If we thought the same way about vehicles, there wouldn't be enough used automobiles for young people to afford their first car. And since we're in Vancouver, the same thing goes for bikes. Perhaps you're troubled that the proposed developments don't contain enough social housing, but will you sleep better at night knowing that a single large mansion allowed in the existing zoning could be built instead, similar to the, I think something similar's happening down the block? Let me be clear, the status quo is not working, changes precisely what we need. Now, I've walked and biked through Shaughnessy many times since I live nearby. There's enough beautiful mansions to look at if you can see over the hedges, but as far as I can tell, there's little sense of community and pretty much zero street life to speak of. It is, in my opinion, a bit of a dead zone. Um, am I, am I out of time?
Can I steer you to the, uh, no, just steer you to the kind of merits or demerits of the project and, uh, I realise the local neighbourhood's, uh, you know, something that is attached to it, but if we could just focus on the, on the, on the project itself, that would be great.
All right, well, I'm just going to skip ahead to the end here. This four-story development on Granville Street, it won't solve the issue single-handedly, but preventing it and other similar projects will only prolong a crisis that will continue to grow worse over time. For the present and the future, I implore you to do the right thing and improve this rezoning. Thank you.
Thanks so much for, for calling in tonight and, and your patience with our system. We, uh, don't have any questions for you and, um, uh, I'm going to move on to asking the moderator if there are any other callers, uh, on the line at the moment?
We do. Uh, we have Morgan Brewster who queued up to make a statement. Please go ahead, Morgan.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and councillors. My name is Morgan Brewster. I'm a lifelong Vancouver resident and I appreciate the opportunity to add my comments of support this evening. I'm going to be brief as I know it's already been a long hearing. Um, I grew up in this area and I graduated from nearby Prince of Wales Secondary, uh, twenty years ago. Our city has experienced a rental affordability and availability issue for many years. This has been driven, uh, this has driven people, young and old, out of our city, including many of my friends and my family. While this project alone won't solve that issue, this development offers to be part of the solution and we need to continue to increase our housing supply. In addition to the people who live in Shaughnessy now and may require this type of housing in the future as downsizers, there are a lot of young people, like my sister and my sister-in-law, who are both nurses and work at the nearby hospitals, who I'm sure would love to live here with their ease of walking or biking to work. Given the limited supply of land in Vancouver and continued, uh, population growth, I think we need to continue to be progressive in adding to the housing supply in Vancouver. As a fifth-generation Vancouverite and a father of three, which is the sixth generation, it's important to me that my kids and hopefully their kids will have the opportunity to live affordably in our great city. I think this is a great project and I hope it will be endorsed by council. Thank you for your time and this evening and I appreciate your consideration.
Thanks very much. Uh, you do have a question from councillor Hardwick. Uh, councillor Hardwick, please go ahead, up to five minutes.
Mr. Brewster, um, good to hear from a long-time Vancouverite. Do you work in any way in the property development, real estate, mortgage world?
Uh, I'm in, I work in the finance business.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, uh, councillor Hardwick, and thanks. That's all the questions for you. Appreciate it. Uh, thanks so much. If there are any other speakers who want to speak to this item, please call toll-free one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero followed by participant code two nine five eight five hashtag to get on the list before closing the speakers list. Uh, of course, the number's available on the live stream and it's being tweeted out. Um, and that's my, uh, first call for additional speakers. Uh, if I go to, uh, moderators, is there anybody on the line?
Yes, we have one more, mic two. Please go ahead.
Uh, you can hear me there?
Yes, we can, go ahead, please.
Perfect. Excellent. Uh, good evening, Mayor and council. Uh, I'd like to offer my support, my written support for the rental housing proj- project at forty-seven fifty Granville Street. Uh, I, I was, uh, as was Morgan, I was raised in Carisdale and I now reside near Cambie and Main Street with my wife and two children. Uh, my father still lives in the home that I grew up in in Carisdale. Uh, he is getting older and I expect he won't be staying in his house, uh, much longer as it requires a lot of upkeep and it pretty much is assessed value of a lot. Uh, with lots of his friends still living on the west side and in Carisdale and Shaughnessy in particular, I hope they will be able to find housing nearby where he can downsize. While some of his friends and neighbours have moved outside of the area, since there aren't many options for downsizing locally, my father still wants to remain and is attached to the community. This proposal brings eighty-one new homes to the community and does so in a sleek-looking building that has clearly taken the existing character of the neighbourhood into consideration. Given the homes will be adaptable for the long term and have a variety of sizes of the unit, I expect the building will be sought after by many residents in the area looking to downsize. I wholeheartedly support this project. Thank you.
Thank you so much for calling in. Uh, there's no questions for you, uh, and I wanted to, uh, just thanks for, for your participation. Uh, if anybody else would like to speak to this item, please call toll-free one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, uh, participant code two nine five eight five hashtag to get on the list. Uh, so I'm going to have a second call for speakers. That's the second call. Um, moderator, do we have anybody else on the line?
We do not have anybody else on the line at the moment.
Okay, I'm going to ask the clerks, is there anybody in the chambers?
Mayor Stewart, the clerk here, we have no one in the chamber.
Okay, uh, council, I'm going to make a third and final call and then we're going to take a, uh, five-minute recess just to get everybody a chance to, uh, get on the line. Uh, if people do want to speak, uh, please call one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, uh, participant code two nine five eight five hashtag, and that information's available on the live stream feed as well as, uh, on Twitter. And, uh, so council, we're going to take five minutes and then I'll, uh, come back and we'll, uh, we'll see if there's anybody else and then we'll move to, um, closing comments and decision. So thanks, council. It's eight twenty-four now, let's come back at, uh, eight thirty. Hi, council, uh, back, it's, uh, eight thirty-one, and I'm just gonna check with the moderator if there is, uh, anybody on the queue.
Yes, there is, Mr. Mayor, uh, Estelle Jacobson, please go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councillor. I am not personally affected by this development, but nevertheless have listened to yesterday's council meeting and the presentations. I wish to make a few points. Vancouver is a world-class city and is attracting people from all over the world, and I have been hearing about the housing shortage ever since Expo nineteen eighty-six. So it is obvious we'll never catch up with the demand. First of all, I live near Oak Street, however consider the area from Main to Arbutus as my neighbourhood. As councillors are aware, there are several six-story family rental buildings being built at Arbutus and Nanton. I have many renters in my area. As an example, the house neighboring my home has seven renters and the house across the road has three related families living in the home. So I do not have a problem with renters as some people are implying. It is ridiculous to accuse residents of Thirty-second and Minto Avenue of not wanting multifamily residences in the area. For your information, there are eighty-two townhouses, one and a half blocks away at Carter and Thirty-third, as well as the Arthur Erickson-inspired apartment building, yes, an apartment building, which has eighty suites totaling a hundred and sixty-two family-style accommodation. The townhouses and the apartment building are not offensive. The accusation that the residents are against multifamily accommodation has been made up and is total nonsense. We keep hearing about families needing accommodation, yet this is not a family building. Of eighty-one suites, fifty-two are one-bedroom suites with an average of five hundred and ten square feet. Sixty percent of this building is suitable for two people, certainly not a family. The reason for so many one-bedroom suites is that this configuration generates more rent revenue for the landlord. I favor a townhouse development or reduction in the height of the building to three floors. Thank you very much.
Thank you, uh, for calling in. It looks like you've got some questions, uh, councillor Dominado.
Thank you.
Up to five minutes, whenever you're ready.
Uh, sorry, Mr. Mayor, I'll take myself off the queue, I was waiting for questions to staff.
Okay, thanks. Uh, councillor Bly, do you have questions for the speaker?
That, that's, um, similar for me as well, waiting for questions to staff, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Uh, thank you very much, caller, really appreciate you phoning in this evening. Uh, there are no questions for you, so I am going to go back to the moderator now and see if there's any more people on the line to, to speak to this.
Nope, no one else has, uh, has queued up to make a statement.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, so, um, uh, certainly seeing there are no speakers, uh, remaining speakers, the speakers list is now closed, uh, as few or no public comments will receive this item after five PM today, I suggest we now close the receipt of public comments and move to hearing closing comments, asking further questions to staff and to make a decision. Um, so I'm gonna move to the applicant and, uh, does the applicant have any closing comments?
Uh, thank you, your worship. No, I think, uh, we are happy to ha- just go without any closing comments, thank you.
Thanks very much. Staff, do you have any closing comments? They might be on mute. Any closing comments from staff?
Uh, sorry, yes, we had mute on. Um, this is James Bolt, uh, so, uh, we have no, uh, closing comments.
Okay, looks like we have some questions from councillors. Uh, these are just to staff, councillor Dominado, up to five minutes.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yeah, my question is to staff and, uh, there's been a number of residents who, uh, raised questions about the applicability of the Affordable Housing Choices interim zoning policy as well as the secured rental policy and how it applies, um, to this particular project in this area. I just wonder if staff could expand on that and clarify, um, because it has been confusing with different overlapping policies and zoning areas.
And just before we have staff answer, uh, if we could just get everybody to check to make sure they're on mute, uh, getting a little background noise there, thanks so much, and then back to staff.
Uh, thank you, James Bolt here, um, uh, from rezoning. Uh, we're just going to, uh, share a screen that has the Affordable Housing Choices maps on them. Um, Derek, can you do that?
Yeah, it's coming up, you know.
Thank you, councillor Dominado, for your questions, a very good question. We did hear that confusion, uh, with, during our public speakers and we would like an opportunity to, uh, clear that up. Uh, James is gonna pull up a couple of maps. One, uh, was slide six in your presentation that shows the, the HHC, AHC policy and then the interim policy also, and so, James, I think we've got those just about ready for you now. James, would you like to explain those for us?
Okay, I'm just waiting for the, uh, we're just going to share a screen here.
Uh, it's up already, I think.
Oh, I don't see it, uh...
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. We have it on the streaming and I believe planning staff is just pulling it up on the webex.
Okay, great. Actually councillor Dominado, I'm going to pause your time here while we're...
Thank you, I was about to ask the same.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we're sorry for the delay. If you, if you could see that map now, you'll, we've put a big yellow star at the location of the site tonight, that we're under consideration tonight, and you can see the light blue color along Granville there, uh, and what that does, if you go to the, the legend on the map, you can see that that is, um, allows for a three-and-a-half-story form. So, James, would you like to explain any further?
Yes, and, uh, so you can, as on the side of the slide there, you can see it's permissible in R-S and RT zones, uh, up to four to six stories along arterials, and in the bottom left, you can see the color coding to show where those, uh, areas are. So, uh, the, the proximity to the, uh, local shopping area can give you six stories and up to four stories, uh, with addition, uh, with additional density. Maximum two projects within ten blocks, as I mentioned earlier, uh, in the presentation, the other one within ten blocks is, is the hospice site four-five-seven-five, and it allows townhouse and apartment forms. The, the town, uh, there was a question about townhouses and apartments. The original, uh, policy as shown on the map, uh, allowed three-and-a-half stories, uh, and in, uh, June, on June twentieth in, uh, two thousand and eighteen, that was amended to allow four, uh, uh, four-story apartment forms, and that appears in the Affordable Housing Choices interim policy document. So you, you, the, the council added the opportunity to do four-story apartment forms as well. So this was the original, uh, Affordable Housing Choices map, and you can see again the star shows, uh, that all along Granville was permitted because the only criteria was a hundred meters within an arterial. Now, do we have the other slide? We're, we're going to try and get the other slide up. Whoa, do you see that? Uh, I'm just gonna ask if, does people can see a different map now?
Uh, we have the same map, uh, on the pub- I'm looking at the public screen because I like to monitor what the public's seeing here, and I don't see it yet, clerks, on the public screen.
Mayor Stewart, it's the clerk here, and the map that's on the webex, unfortunately it was not one that was in the PowerPoint provided to us, so we're unable to put it on the streaming.
Okay.
Point of privilege, Mr. Mayor, it's councillor Dejanova.
Yes, councillor Dejanova.
Uh, I was just gonna suggest we could take maybe a brief reset because I think it's important that everything that, um, is being asked for is referenced, um, that or we could return to questions for, I just wanna make sure that, of course, the public gets to see what we see and what staff is referencing.
Sure, I'm just, uh, just relying on the clerk to kind of give us some idea of, as if, uh, where we are in terms of, uh, providing the, the, um, materials, and I, I agree that the, it should be both public and, uh, webex. In fact, public, uh, stream is preferable because we can all see that. We push on our orange cones and the public, of course, can see it on the live stream. So clerks, uh, wha- what's the thought about getting the second map?
Um, Mayor Stewart, the map that's on the webex is with planning. We do not have it here in the chamber, so we would have to have them send it to us, and I believe they're doing that as we speak. So if you give us, um, two to three minutes, we can get it up on the streaming.
Okay, sure, let's give us, uh, right, I'll give you five and let's go to eight forty-seven and we'll, we'll be, uh, actually, I'm seeing it coming up right now on the public stream. So I've got it on both, uh, councils, so, uh, we are kind of fairly showing this, and so I will, uh, councillor Dominado, if you have, uh, are we, are we just gonna, are you okay with staff going ahead with an explanation of the second map?
Yes, certainly, that'd be great.
Okay, thanks. Uh, please, staff, go ahead.
Okay, this is James Bolt again. Um, so, looking at this map, the first thing I'll note, um, and this is shown in the report too, that this is a draft, this map has never been approved by council, but it has been included in the reports for, that dealt with the, uh, low-density, uh, rezoning opportunities under the secured rental policy approved in, at the end of, uh, two thousand and nineteen. Uh, this map has also been used at a number of public open houses, including the one for four-seven-five-zero. This is just draft, but, uh, the issue that some people are noting is if you look on the map, uh, where the site is located, and it's right above the three, uh, three-three there, we didn't have a time to put a star on it, but you can see that going all the way up to King Ed, down to Thirty-seventh, uh, there is no, uh, opportunity indicated on, on this map. So going from, uh, the first Shaunnessy area, which would be excluded in any event, uh, going down, and it begins about Thirty-seventh because then it's within the proximity requirements, uh, at Forty-first and Granville.
So, so just to clarify, the, the new policy would exclude this area, so this applicant's only opportunity to, to come in with an application is under the old AHC policy.
Councillor Dominado?
Yes, uh, thank you, and so I guess, just two follow-up questions to that is, so what I heard, um, with Mr. Bolt was that, um, there was an amendment made to the Affordable Housing Choices policy, interim zoning policy in June twenty-eighteen, uh, enabling four-story in this area, uh, both apartments, mid-rides and townhomes, and this application came in, was it March twelfth, twenty-nineteen? Did I get that correctly?
Yes, it came in after that.
Okay, the amendment, that was what the policy in place was, and then this proposal came in after, and hence the application of that policy. Um, and then my, my, um, other question is, uh, some, some individuals have raised the subject of affordability and it's top of mind for many of us, but, um, in reviewing the Affordable Housing Policy, Choices Policy, is that it states really clearly, it was not intended to create rents affordable to all, it was focused on adding supply in light of the, um, uh, very low vacancy rate in the city. Is that correct?
That's correct, and I believe that in the presentation we did, or that I did last night, there was some income information that demonstrates that as well.
Okay, and then, uh, within the, the report, it also mentioned, uh, with respect to the applicant, and I know he can't, they can't answer questions now, but, um, it was in the report that they...
Point of privilege, Mr. Mayor, I, I'm, was taken off the queue and I'm not quite sure why. I'm not touching the queue, so I'm not sure how that happened.
Okay, I didn't, uh, did not take you off the queue.
My apologies, councillor Dominado, but...
No, no worries.
I wasn't touching my computer.
And we are, yeah, okay, I'll put you back on the queue councillor Dejanova, and, uh, councillor, um, Dominado, you're, you're, I've given you kind of extra time because of the problems, but we're at, kind of, well, well over five minutes, so...
Can I, can I begin with my question?
That's fine.
Not quite, uh, councillor Dominado.
I'll, I'll move a second round if I need it, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Uh, councillor Dejanova, I've put you on the, uh, end of the queue, I've got councillor Bly next.
Oh, Mr. Mr. Mayor, but as I noted, I called a point of personal privilege for that reason.
I know, uh, councillor Dejanova, I did not see you on the, on the queue at any point, so I don't know what happened there, but I do have you on the queue now and I've got councillor Bly.
I did see councillor Dejanova ahead of me on the queue and I'm fine if she wants to go first, um, no...
So you're, okay, councillor Dejanova, um...
I, it, it, it's fine, Mr. Mayor, as long as, as long as I'll have some time for questions.
No, it's okay, go ahead.
Um, just, uh, thanks very much, I can see my timer going now. Uh, my first question to staff is regarding, uh, families and homes for families in the neighbourhood, and specifically, uh, I had asked a question to, uh, one of the speakers and appreciated their presentation and them sharing their experience, and they had said that they felt that the family-sized units, um, usually aren't or would not, in this case, be, uh, rented by families, that they would probably be, I, I think the example given was university students instead. Uh, does staff have any information, um, showing that families in the city of appropriate size for two-to-three-bedroom units in this neighbourhood would be able to rent these units? Would they be affordable for, um, considering our definitions right now at the City of Vancouver and BC Housing under their current definitions, which I know we base ours off of?
Um, with, uh, respect to the, uh, the income and affordability, in that previous, uh, previous, uh, presentation that I did, I did have some income information, and what it did show was that, uh, and this is based on the, uh, Census, uh, Canada material, is that the, uh, a single-person household w- would find it very challenging to, uh, move into this building and afford those rents. However, once you get to the couple income, then you get, uh, the, the income jumps up quite a bit, and that's probably because not only the two people, but they're probably older and have more established careers, so you, there's a big jump, and we found that, just based on those numbers, it looked, and typical West Side, the West Side rents, that those households could afford to rent, uh, in the building.
Okay, thanks. Uh, just, just a follow-up question to that would be, um, what is the vacancy rate like right now for two-to-three-bedroom or for family-sized units in this neighbourhood, um, that would be sort of up the, the same, um, age or tenure in a, a development like this? Um... Um, what is the stock in the vacancy like in Shaughnessy?
Uh, they, in the, the vacancy rate in the, uh, in the Shaughnessy area, uh, is about, um, 0.5% of lower than the, the, the city average, which is around 1%.
Okay, thanks very much. Um, appreciate, uh, Counselor Bly, um, allowing me to ask my questions before her. Mr. Mayor, I'll put myself at the bottom of the queue, um, prepared to move the motion. And I may have more questions after, but at this point, I don't. So I'll take myself off, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Bly, please go ahead.
Uh, thanks very much. Um, I just have a couple of clarifying questions to staff. Um, one is to address some of the concerns we heard regarding parking. And I apologize if Counselor Dominado asked this question. I didn't hear it asked, but I didn't hear everything that she said. So, uh, plans for any parking changes to address some of the concerns? One of our speakers suggested permit parking or something like that. I wonder if there's anything in the works?
Uh, this is James Bolt. I'll ask our, uh, traffic management specialist here, Rosemary, to respond.
Uh, thank you for your question. This is Rosa Drapovich, uh, Parking and Transportation Development Engineer. Um, so in terms of what the development is proposing to provide parking, they are proposing to exceed the minimum parking requirement that's required for this development per the bylaw. That includes, uh, provisions for their residents as well as for, um, visitors and passenger loading on-site. Uh, so we're, staff are not expecting any impacts to street parking as a result of the development. However, um, staff do continue to monitor the on-street parking conditions. Resident parking permits are an option that can be explored. Uh, so the process for that is sort of separate from, uh, this development rezoning process. It's done on a request basis. And residents, uh, can contact the city for, uh, review of on-street regulations and to review if, uh, resident parking permits can be installed in the area.
Okay, that's really helpful. Has, ha- do we know if there's been an organized group in the neighborhood asking for revisions to our, um, permit parking or to address parking issues?
Uh, we don't have any record of requests for parking permits in the area.
Thank you. My second question is on the topic of local areas, uh, schools in the area. And I'm particularly interested in, um, enrollment numbers for the local public schools, knowing that there are private and public schools, um, in, in the area. Can, can I understand more about, uh, capacity for the local schools, public schools?
Uh, James Bolt here from rezoning. Yes, I can, uh, elaborate a bit on the school capacity issue, which is discussed on, uh, sorry, uh, page four of the report. Um, I can just elaborate a bit more on it. Uh, for the Shaughnessy Elementary School, it's the catchment school, which is about three blocks to the north. Uh, it has an operating capacity of four, uh, 433, uh, students. This is based on the Vancouver School Board Draft Long Range Facilities Plan from 2019. Uh, what, uh, that plan shows is that there's, there's anticipated, anticipated to be a small increase in student enrollment over the next 10 years up to 2027. It's under capacity, uh, in 2018, but it's expected to be about 2% over capacity in 2022 and then about 7% over capacity in 2027. And so the school is anticipated to be operating slightly over capacity. That's the elementary school. As, as some speakers noted, there are the two private schools. I've, I've given the numbers that are, that we have available for the enrollment there, which is for Little Flower Academy, 480 students, and for York House, 640 students.
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna pause you there, thanks so much. I don't have a ton of time, I have one more question. And I did see in the report and also mentioned in the presentation about 10 local area schools. And so we've, so that was more the context of my question versus Shaughnessy specifically. But I'll take another look at that before I make my final comment. The final question I have is around tree retention and the comment made by, um, a speaker of the 17 trees. But I understand that there's been considerable effort to preserve, um, a, a tree or more than one tree on the site. I wonder if you could speak to that, and that will be my last question.
So, yes, this is James Bolt again. Um, I, I can just briefly mention what it is and then, um, Derek Robinson, who's the, um, urban design planner.
I only have 15 seconds, so just whatever the quick answer is would be great, thanks.
A red cedar out on the front on Granville Street and then there's four trees at the back. Those are the, the main trees that are being kept on-site.
Okay, okay, it's the red cedar out front. Okay, that's helpful, thank you very much.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Kerr, up to five minutes.
Yep, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um, a few questions. Um, several speakers talked about this setting, uh, guidelines for the future of Granville Street. Can you please respond to that? Would it, will it change the whole character of Granville Street up and down?
Uh, I'm sorry, could you repeat the question, please, Counselor?
Yeah, one of the, or several of the speakers said that, uh, this project will change the whole guideline or set guidelines, in other words, set the, a new standard for what the form of development will be along Granville Street.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, thanks for the question. This is Derek Robinson, development planner with the Urban Design Group. Um, so this is, uh, as, as we've discussed, uh, a policy that's, uh, no longer applicable for new applications. And so in, in that sense, you know, this would not be a precedent for future development throughout, uh, Granville Street. Um, however, staff is supportive of the, the height and form of massing that is proposed here on this arterial intersection. Uh, and we do believe that it, uh, can comfortably coexist with the existing RS5 neighborhood fabric, as well as potential future policy directions that may emerge.
Okay, that's not a precedent. Uh, yeah, uh, applicant, see, there's something in the beginning, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't ask him a question, about enhanced affordability. What is the enhanced affordability of this project?
Uh, I'm sorry, that, the applicant, uh, is not, uh, cannot answer that, um.
I know, I know. No, I'm asking you to answer that question. And from, uh, staff's point of view, what is the enhanced affordability?
Uh, the, in this case, it's the fact that there's, uh, there's the secured rental. And so that, uh, over time, you know, this contributes to the supply of rental in, in the city.
Okay, um, so, um, the original goal of this policy was innovative approaches, um, around, um, introducing affordable housing types. Um, can you explain how this, uh, application satisfies that goal of the pro- of the policy?
Uh, the Affordable Housing Choices was intended to explore, uh, a wide variety of different housing opportunities, um, including things like, uh, co-ownership, uh, uh, social housing, different types of social housing, co-ops. So we did, most of the projects received under the program were for secured rental. Uh, that seemed to be the, the, the preferred option that developers were bringing forward. So there was a, an opportunity for variety, but most of them came in as secured rental.
Right, and how many total projects, um, have we had under this policy?
We have 30 projects that have been received. And I believe, um, nine, 13 have been approved and one rejected.
Over the, over the length of time, since 2012?
That's correct.
Okay, that's it for my questions, thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Counselor Kerr. Uh, we've got, uh, Counselor DeGenova on the list now.
Mr. Mayor, I, I, are we still in questions? Because I wouldn't want to take the opportunity away from anyone. I was prepared to move the motion.
Yep, please go ahead. Do we have a second or for the motion?
Um, first of all, I'd like to move some recommendations along with the yellow memo. Sorry, I should say.
Right, that's right. Thank you for adding that yellow memo. And then we have a second or, sorry, I didn't hear. Counselor Bly, thanks very much. Okay, now I've moved queues, so if you wanted debate, uh, we're into debate and decision now. So if you'd like to be on this queue, uh, please go ahead, mover of the motion. Counselor DeGenova first, uh, sorry, I'm just resetting the timer here. There we go, sorry. Counselor DeGenova, up to five minutes.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I, first of all, I want to thank all of the speakers. Um, regardless of, of what, um, if you came out in support, um, or in opposition of this, or you weren't sure, but you wanted to share your views about this project and how it might impact you, um, or your concerns about the community. I really appreciate it. And I certainly, um, it's heartwarming to hear about the passion that people have for their communities. Uh, I do want to say that, uh, although, uh, I'm a resident of East Vancouver, uh, when I was, uh, going to university and, and in my early twenties, uh, I had, I lived in, uh, a condominium in Shaughnessy. And there were very few, um, sorry.
Sorry, Counselor, I just-
Some feedback from the line there?
Nope, just want to make sure everybody's on, on mute because, so we don't, right? So, go ahead, Counselor DeGenova, continue.
Thanks, and I, I was re- I realized, uh, although at the time I, uh, I rented, uh, how rare it was, uh, how few, um, opportunities there were, uh, for rental in this neighborhood. And I don't think that it has to be that there's only rental or there's only condominiums or there's only, uh, single-family detached homes. I think that, you know, we need, uh, different types and the right type of housing supply, which is often coined as a buzzword and, um, that's used. But I think that the right types of supply are considering all different types of supply. And that means, uh, you know, residents who kindly answered my questions and shared with me, you know, the importance of their single-family detached home. I'm not saying that that person shouldn't have their home. Uh, but I appreciated, uh, that individual answering my questions and as I tried to understand how that person could have their home and we could also move forward, uh, with rental in the community. Um, certainly in areas like Shaughnessy and on the west side of Vancouver, um, I hear from people who, uh, grew up in these areas and can't afford to live there alone or with their families. They either can't find appropriate housing for themselves because a huge detached home, uh, for a student or a younger person, um, or a millennial is not going to, uh, it, they're not able to afford the rents or the mortgage of $107,000 a month that was quoted by another speaker. I think that it's important that we think about housing opportunities for everyone and that includes some of the rental in these, in these beautiful homes. Uh, I know that Shaughnessy has a number of unique policies that we don't see throughout the rest of Vancouver. Uh, but our staff just affirmed for me that also Shaughnessy, uh, is half a percent, uh, below, uh, the vacancy rate that we see around the rest of the city. And I think that it is important for the missing middle to become less missing, that we do move forward with more opportunities and more housing types. And, and I also support, and I want to say it because it's been brought up a number of times, I support and appreciate the good work that the hospice does. And although I too, um, felt that I, I may have been, uh, attacked for the position that I took on, uh, housing, uh, it doesn't mean that there can't be coexistence of housing and hospice. And I, I would hope that there could be. I would hope that that, that would be, um, ma- that would, that would include making, um, Shaughnessy more of a community. And I think it's an excellent community now, but I think about the people who are growing up there and how it cuts them off at the knees if they can't even afford, uh, to live there when they're older. I think about, you know, my own child, who's a toddler. And I think about where is she gonna live in the city one day? How is she going to be able to afford something? Uh, here I, uh, you know, is trying to just make sure she has a, a roof over her head and a place to live. But, you know, what are the rents, uh, and the prices going to be? That being said, uh, what someone else has said, and I know I only have 30 seconds, although, uh, I might take some time to close on the motion as well. I think that it is important, though, that we, we consider, um, is this affordable? And I think that Counselor Kerr asked excellent questions. But if, if we don't start somewhere, if we don't start with more affordable, then we're saying it's okay. And I think it was a perfect example about the used car, the used bicycle. And I'm hoping, uh, the council will support this project and we can make sure that we hit the right supply in Shaughnessy too. Thanks.
Thanks very much. Uh, Counselor Swanson, up to five minutes.
Yes, um, so these rezonings aren't usually easy. Um, there's a bunch of problems with this project, in my opinion. Uh, the increased density that the developer is getting with no CACs and I guess no DCLs. Um, so there's no actual compensation to the city for the extra density. There is not really much affordability for the aver- there's no affordability for the average renter. It is on a polluting arterial, so renters are yet again being used as a pollution barrier for owners. The proponent actually said this, that renters in the building would shield owners from traffic noise. Uh, on the other hand, I just hate the innuendo that tenants are somehow lesser than owners. And we even heard that tenants of an expensive rental building like this one are somehow better than lower-paying tenants. At least that was the innuendo. So there are so many layers of discrimination. And this will, this building would be cheaper than the surrounding homes. And I don't think there is any danger of this being a gentrifying project. It's not gonna raise costs in the rest of the neighborhood like a lot of these rental projects do. So that's it for my holding forth here.
Thank you so much. Uh, Counselor Hardwick, up to five minutes.
Thank you. So Granville and 32nd, what are we, why are we considering this project? The answer is allegedly because there's a housing crisis, a housing emergency, an extreme shortage of rental availability. It is so urgent that we're addressing this in the middle of summer during a pandemic over the phone. So why are we really considering this project? The application has been grandfathered under the expired AHC program. This policy, followed by Rental 100 and MERP, have all been advanced because we have repeatedly been told there is a rental shortage. So where is the evidence? Where is the evidence of the vacancy shortage? Where is the data? We know full well that thousands of units have returned to the market with the collapse of Airbnb and foreign student demand. And all of this, we base on the assumptions, coming back to the Housing Vancouver Strategy and its goals and targets. We continuously quote these targets and measure against them. And we've now established with the recalibration motion that these targets are aspirational, not actual projections. Friday, Jen- July 31st is the deadline for receiving updated data to inform the recalibration of the Housing Vancouver Strategy. And once we have the data, we can properly analyze and ultimately adjust our policies instead of continuing to charge down the same path as, as if nothing's changed. Using this analysis and recalib- and once this is done, until that's done, we should really pause because we don't really know whether there is a housing shortage or whether we are building the right supply. And I question the assumptions underlying, uh, these policies as justification. So what does the city get out of it? Does, how does the city benefit? Uh, well, we receive no DCLs, uh, so what's the motivation? What is our motivation in doing this? Well, so we're saying it's more important to build 81 market rental units, I'm sorry, homes, that, that are inconsistent with the neighborhood and its history of community planning, that it has issues with parking, mobility, access to shopping, school availa- availability and community amenities. It's not a 10-minute walkable catchment. So what is the justification? It's more important to build 81 market rental units that are inconsistent with neighborhood character than it is to honor and respect the community planning process. So again, why are we doing this? Who does it serve? Who does it hurt? Who does it benefit and why? I've heard the script hundreds of times now, referring to 81 homes, quote-unquote, and the objective is ultimately to build more product, so let's be clear about it. Here we are at the end of July, in the middle of summer, during a pandemic of unprecedented proportions, conducting hearings over the phone, having public, this public meeting and considering this application. We are saying it's more important than the community trust. So I cannot support this application. It's been a flawed process driven by false assumptions. This is not gentle density. This is not gentle density, but there is ample opportunity for gentle density in Shaughnessy and most neighbourhoods in Vancouver. And if the city actually prioritized that housing form to accommodate our population growth, I would feel we are going in the right direction. So I'm very much looking forward to seeing that data on, on Friday and spending August, looking at the numbers, and I hope that council will be really open going forward to really thinking about what we're doing with our housing policy moving forward. Thank you.
Councillor Ly, up to five minutes.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I'm going to be supporting this project tonight, and I will just make a couple of comments in terms of outstanding evidence that I think, that hasn't been mentioned so far, that informs that decision. One of them that we heard, and I can see and concur with, having lived in this neighbourhood, actually rented in this neighbourhood for fourteen years, and I continue to rent and raise two kids, so I'm not going to, not going to harp on whether or not renters are great neighbours. I think we are. I am. I mow the lawns, I wash things, I keep things clean, and I take care of the home because that's where I raise my kids. And I want them to respect the place where they are raised. And I think Vancouver is full of people that choose to raise families and rent as a way of providing housing for their families. So that, to me, is inarguable as it pertains to this, this particular development. But it was about the seniors and the downsizing, and giving, providing options for aging in place. And we just, we know, we've seen the, the data, I've talked to many people, and this is actually a concern. And when seniors only have an option to leave their neighbourhood and oftentimes surrounding family, it's, it's, there's risk involved, there's health risk involved, and it's just not an ideal situation. So I really was compelled by those that shared that about their own family members that would like to live in a place like this, that grew up in Shaughnessy, that perhaps is, is currently living in a massive home, that they would like to downsize, and the choice becomes downsize, but you have to leave the neighbourhood because there's no available rental, affordable or not, that is subjective, but available rental in the area. And further to that, the young man that made a comment about his mom not wanting to own anymore, not wanting after her partner, you know, passes away, widowed, they don't want the burden of ownership, and that renting is a better option. So that, for me, was compelling evidence that this ought to be supported, as well as familiar with enrollment in local schools. And what we know collectively, there's a lot of schools in this area, but there's also a lot of private schools. And there is an issue of low registration in the public schools, and we see that with cancellation of certain programming, because the student enrollment just isn't there within the public schools. And we are consistently approving rental buildings on the east side of Vancouver where there's zero space in any schools, because there aren't nearly as many private schools, and our schools right across the city have a major issue with capacity. So I think that's also a compelling reason to support this project for those units that would be geared towards families, that there are many schools in the area that have space. All that to be said, I appreciate that change is extremely difficult, and those that are adjacent properties to the building will be the most affected by this development. Those that sort of live in the vicinity, I think, will be far less affected by this development, and we heard from all. So I just want to acknowledge the fact that the, the testimony shared by the adjacent neighbours are sharing the direct impact that this development will have on their property, and we've heard that time and again, and that's always the tension point between something that is new and, and, and wouldn't be perhaps expected in a single-family neighbourhood like Shaughnessy, but is necessary. And I just think, you know, we as a council don't often see buildings like this on the west side of Vancouver coming forward, and I think the developer has the right intention in mind with this particular development. To me, this is not at all like the hospice situation, and I stand by that decision, I stand by my decision on that project for very different reasons, that this project has, unless, anyway, this project has not, to me, at all the same as that one. So I think that the developer has presented a, a strong case for, for the intention behind this development and doing the right thing by the neighbourhood and the city by providing more rental options in a new part of the city that we don't often get to, to consider. So for all those reasons, I am going to support this, this project and appreciate all of the speakers on both sides of the debate who came and called in and spoke.
Thanks so much. Thank you, councillor Carr, five minutes.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to start by just stating a couple of points that had come up. One that was asked about whether we voted against a project near this one on Granville next to the hospice. I did vote against it, but not because it was in Shaughnessy, but because of the sensitivity of that particular location right next to the hospice. A second point that's been raised about this project being a precedent for Granville. I ask that question of staff, it's not going to be a precedent for the street. This is a program that actually limited the number of examples, sorry, the number of applications within ten blocks to two. It's, it, this is not a precedent-setting zoning, beginning of zoning change. Regarding one of the speakers who said that almost every speaker said, "Why not townhouses?" That was incorrect. I looked at all of the notes, I checked on every speaker, there were twenty-four speakers who spoke in support of this, and thirteen who spoke against it, some of them stating why not townhouses. So onto the, this particular application, I've heard concerns that the Affordable Housing Choices interim Resoning Policy is no longer a policy. That's a spurious point in my mind. The application came in prior to decision to end the program, so I think that needs to be clearly stated, this is absolutely legitimate. I was on council when the Affordable Housing Choices Interim Resoning Policy was introduced in 2012, the only one of you who was on council. At that time, I did vote against it, and it was absolutely based in process. That particular program was tabled in council out of the mayor's task force on housing affordability report. There was no advance warning of it, there was no public consultation on it, I was appalled by the process, and I therefore voted against. It's been eight years since then, and I am, at this point, beyond protesting the process of 2012. I'm absolutely immersed in the challenge of how to get more affordable housing, especially rental housing in Vancouver and throughout this city. So what was back then and what is now good about the policy under which this is being considered? Number one, it does introduce innovative approaches with different examples of affordable housing types, so it is about something different within an area. The number of applications are limited, so it have been limited, so it's not like a wholesale rezoning change. Height is not that egregious, four stories. It's only on arterials with transit, it's not in the hearts of neighbourhoods that these projects happen. And it's citywide, no neighbourhood is exempted, except if it has undergone a recent community plan. It does, in my mind, introduce more affordable, affordability and more housing options in this neighbourhood. Like councillor Bligh, I was very interested in hearing at the very start about the applicant stating that, that the whole idea started with sixteen Shaughnessy senior homeowners wanting to downsize in the neighbourhood. This does provide opportunities for those people. And so therefore, I am going to be supporting this project.
Thank you councillor Carr. Councillor Fry, up to five minutes.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, it was just over a year ago today that we were voting on the, the development, or the rezoning application for across the street. And to councillor Carr's point just now, I think the real distinction there was the, was the full lot excavation directly next door to a hospice, to one of the only hospices in the city of Vancouver, that really influenced the decision that day for many of us to, to reject that application because of that context. It was never about renters in Shaughnessy. In fact, at that time, I spoke to the history of Shaughnessy, and in particular First Shaughnessy, which was largely saved by renters, because during the depression, a lot of those fantastic old mansions fell into disuse, and there wasn't really room for servants' quarters and large sprawling mansions. Nobody could afford to keep them, so they became rooming houses. And in the nineteen sixties, those rooming houses were formally sanctioned by the city of Vancouver, and in no small part are what allowed so many of this really sort of cherished architectural heritage, in particular in First Shaughnessy, to actually survive. So renters are certainly not incongruous or, or some kind of anathema to Shaughnessy. And I think, in fact, they could be a benefit to Shaughnessy, and I think that when we think about, about vibrant neighbourhoods and well-rounded neighbourhoods, I think this is a worthwhile contribution. To councillor Swanson's earlier point, of course, it could be more affordable housing, but I think in this case, that's, that's not on offer, but it's still, I think, a good project. It may not be gentle density, but I think it's quite modest density. And, you know, I have a great fondness for heritage architecture and the history of the city. And frankly, as I look, particularly through a lot of Second Shaughnessy and up along Granville Street, there's a lot of, of building and architecture that has no heritage merit, has no historical merit. I don't think there's any historical merit necessarily in the, in, in the lot that we're talking about today, the two, the two houses in question. And I think that when we look to developments nearby, like the, the muse at Highcroft and McCray, Cray Manor Muse, they've provided a, a, a nice fulsome sort of rounding to some of the traditional architecture. They're contemporary but have a historical flair, and I think that this particular development does not detract per se. I appreciate the attention to some of the landscaping features and, and trying to integrate with some of the kind of existing vernacular while not aping it, compliments. And when I look to some of the faux heritage that we see throughout Shaughnessy, that apes' heritage doesn't complement it, actually kind of makes a mockery of it, I think this is a, is, is a reasonable compromise from a form and architecture point of view. From a housing delivery point of view, it's hard to argue with eighty-one units of rental. It is difficult for me to swallow the one point seven million dollar in DCL waivers, but I think, all things being equal, that the merit of this project does outweigh my displeasure with the DCL waivers. I do hope to see us reform and refine that policy, because I don't think it's a good ongoing policy. I think, as we all know in this council, those DCLs and CACs and those capital funding things, as we just come out of a big, massive capital funding reprioritization, recognizing how important DCLs and CACs are to the city, I worry that this isn't a sustainable kind of policy. But until we refine that policy, I will be supporting this project. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Dominado.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to staff, the applicant, as well as to all of the residents who called in and came in person to reflect their perspective. I appreciate there are some diverse perspectives on this, and certainly heard that throughout. One of the things I was looking for was clarity around how this proposal was in line with our policies. It was a little muddy there for a bit, just because of the timing of the application, the expiry of the Affordable Housing Choices policy, and then the new secured rental policy that was approved by council. I appreciate that staff did clarify that for me, because that is important for me to understand the policy context, and, and did it come within that policy framework, and I appreciate the clarification on that. Also appreciate that the applicant's presentation, one of the things I look for and is a consideration as well, when I'm looking at these applications, is the presentation by the applicant. I, one of the things I noted was a very detailed reflection of what they had heard from the feedback that had been received through the open houses and the submissions, and based on that input and feedback, the changes and adaptations they had made. And we don't always get that in some of the applications that come before council, and I, I really appreciate being able to understand, okay, this is where you've started, and here is where you've landed based on that feedback. And there was also a lot of acknowledgement around trying to address tree retention, other things, but I think that's noteworthy. The other thing I, I consider is, and again, appreciate there are different perspectives on this, but the, the need for purpose-built rental, for me, there's demonstrably evidence that that is needed based on our vacancy rate, and that this does address that gap, it does provide additional eighty-one homes. It does not necessarily address, from many people's perspectives, affordability, but it does address that supply. And fundamentally, to me, it comes down to two words, and that is housing choices. I heard a resident, and I, I think, I think the words used were that we cannot be all things to all people. I, I think that what the city can do is be an enabler of choices for residents, and I think that is part of our role. And it comes up in public hearing after public hearing, and, and we've been talking, a lot of our focus has actually been on social housing and supportive housing, and, and that is about enabling choices and enabling people to live and stay in our city, and because it's, it's not an expensive place to be, or it is not an affordable place to live. But this is also about choices, and we heard from a number of residents who talked about the applicability of, of professionals who are working at the hospital, teachers teaching in nearby schools, so they wouldn't have to commute, they could actually live nearby. I also was quite moved by the comments made by a number of callers who phoned in, like councillors Bligh, like councillors, councillor Carr, around speaking to the fact that they grew up on the west side, they now live on the east side, their parents may still live on the west side but are looking to downsize, and, and that we need to pay some attention to seniors and the ability to stay within their neighbourhoods and communities. And that is something I heard, you know, eighteen months ago as well, when I was door-knocking, was that, that we need to evolve so that that is an option for people. And so I think that's also, has a lot of merit as I consider this application. I also heard, and I appreciate, you know, we have a councillor who spoke to being a renter, that there were some assumptions I heard in some of the comments about renters, and also assumptions about what type of housing is appropriate for families or not. Again, everyone's circumstances are different, and I have many friends who do live in apartments, are raising their kids in apartments, and that is a reality for them, and, and in some cases, they stayed in apartments, other cases, they started in an apartment and laddered up into a townhome based on availability. But I think that we have to recognize that we have a diverse population, this will not meet the needs of everyone, but it certainly will provide more purpose-built rental and, and housing choices for residents. And, and on that subject, I, I think it was noteworthy to hear from staff that under this Affordable Housing Choices policy, or interim resoning policy, there's been thirty projects, thirteen have been approved. It's eight years, and this was really to attempt to provide a more diverse housing topology, and we've heard very clearly as well that we need more ground-oriented housing. I recognize this is a four-story, but I think that the previous application on Granville, I believe it was a missed opportunity, it was twenty-one townhomes, and it's come up several times this evening. I think it was a missed opportunity, it was only one of two applications under this particular policy, and it was one of those forms of housing we're looking for. We're dealing with this one tonight, and, you know, I appreciate that, that this is a change for the neighbourhood. However, I do think we need to consider the big picture here in terms of our housing choices and housing needs. Thank you.
Councillor Boyle, up to five minutes.
Thanks. Much of what I had made note of to say has already been said. I will be supporting this project. I think it's worth naming, considering the larger conversations happening across the city these days, that the history of our city, including in zoning and land use, includes policies that were designed to exclude certain types of people. certain types of people based on race and income and wealth. Um, there are parts of the history and design of our city that need to change and exclusionary zoning is one of them. If we want more secure rental housing without the loss or displacement of existing older secure rental housing, and I do think that we need that, then we need to be building rental in neighborhoods like Shaughnessy, uh, and welcoming more new residents into those neighborhoods. So, I think this is a good project. I think this is a great location for renters, for eighty-one families to get to call home. Uh, and I want to say really clearly that I don't use the term "home" sarcastically. These will be homes for new neighbors and families. There aren't speculative renters. These new rental units will be lived in by eighty-one families who will add to the soul of this neighborhood. I think it's important, um, and, uh, and I hope they're, uh, welcomed, uh, as I know they will add to the character and value of this place they'll call home.
Thank you, Counselor Boyle. Counselor Weeb?
Yeah, most of the comments have already been stated by the counselors. I think that I really appreciate the proponent and really doing their homework on this site and recognizing where some of the important trees are and the hedge that is kind of iconic on Brown Street. So, I really appreciate the integrated whole plate that kind of real, that kind of realizes the geography of the land and ensures that it kind of fits in, um, to the neighborhood in a way that's more respectful, um, than we've seen some other projects that come towards us. So, really appreciate that side of it. Um, I'm someone that sits on the first disability advisory committee for the last six years and townhomes are great, but it is an issue. There are a lot of stairs and I think that this is a great opportunity to where they dip the building down a little bit to ensure that we can still have units that can be adaptable, um, to be fully accessible and accessible parking underground, um, is key. And so, I think that when we are looking at what does fit and what are the needs of the neighborhood, I think that this project has met a lot of them and I will be supportive. Um, and I do appreciate all the speakers.
Counselor Deschanel.
Oh, um, are you, because you moved the motion? I just, I, I, yeah, I was, I was just gonna, um, say something very short in closing, Mr. Mayor, but I, if, if you'd like to go first, that's. Sure, thanks. Okay. I give you the closing statement? Yeah. Uh, thanks. Uh, first of all, I just want to really, uh, give a shout out to the staff who are here again at nine thirty. Uh, the planning staff have done so much work and the absolute integrity they bring to this process. Every i's dotted, every t's crossed. The consul, the consultation is, is above and beyond and I really can't sing your praises enough for, for making this a process we can all believe in. And, uh, so thanks for that. Thanks to the clerks for, uh, just making this all work. I think, again, I talked to my parliamentary friends who are still trying to figure out how to do the voting and, um, you know, and that's Ottawa and, and we're doing it here. Uh, we're doing it pretty well every day. So, great work. I am so excited about this project. I, I just think about the eighty-one families that are gonna be living there, uh, and, you know, being kind of closing in my mid-fifties now and I've been a renter for as long as I can remember, um, I just think about the opportunity that that affords people and that half of this city are renters. Like that, of course, people feel this is home because it is their home. Uh, and that half of the city is renters and soon it'll be fifty-five percent and soon it'll be sixty and like all great cities you move to, you know, I, I think New York now is eighty percent renters. And that's what makes cities great. And so, I am, I really just wanted to thank all the effort from the, from the team to put this together and I think this is a great project and I am so excited to vote for it. So, thanks, everybody, for, for all the work you're doing and I will turn it to, uh, Counselor Deschanel. Thanks very much, Mr. Mayor. Well, I won't thank staff, although I am thankful to them. Uh, but, uh, oh, I'll skip over that in my notes because you did an excellent job, uh, on behalf of all of us, Mr. Mayor. But, um, what I wanted to say is that I have noticed, um, and I appreciate all of my colleagues' comments, uh, regardless of where they stand on, um, on this. I, I think that, uh, we've all heard, uh, not just the passion, but the experience and I feel that it's a real honor to hear that from people, uh, for them to share their lives and their experience with us. Um, but as I, as I, as I think back to, and yes, you know, it was brought up, the townhome project that didn't move forward and the possible, you know, thirteen thousand square foot mansion that might, and I remember, you know, there was a lot of divisiveness. Instead of talking about the divisiveness and considering we are in a public hearing, so we have to focus specifically on this application. I hope that we do hear from the people who, um, spoke so passionately to us and especially those who perhaps spoke in opposition of this project. As others have said, you know, this is about affordable housing choices. And if there's, and I think that our staff has done an excellent job of trying to find ways forward considering what we have against, what we have working against us is we are one of the least affordable cities to live in the world and it's a great problem to have because more and more people want to come here, but we have less and less housing. I do believe that we need more of the right supply and especially in looking to the younger people who are privileged enough to be born or grow up in this city, um, or have an opportunity to come to this city and know they'd like to live here. Um, for me, I think that we definitely, we need to close that gap. And if we don't move forward with some, starting somewhere with something more affordable, we're not gonna close that gap. That gap is going to widen and I'm concerned that instead of trying to get back the missing middle, we're going to see that middle become even more missing and that equality and divide become less and less. I also think about BC Women's Hospital and hearing the number of staff that, um, you know, were speakers. So, I, I noted one presentation, um, by someone who, who lives in the neighborhood who also works there. And I, I think about the seventy-five hundred babies that are born at BC Women's Hospital in Shaughnessy. Now, not all of the families might live in Shaughnessy, but that's where all of, where either one of those babies started their lives. And I'd like to think that in the city of Vancouver, we can at the very least find room, um, beyond that number, but also for everyone who, who wants to live here, who have the chance to grow up here. So, when we talk about pushing people out of their neighborhoods, I'm thinking about people who already can't speak for themselves. And, uh, I just wanted to say that in closing, Mr. Mayor. So, I, I will be wholeheartedly supporting this and I don't think the affordability is as deep as I'd like to see, but again, we have to start somewhere and we're not just gonna wake up tomorrow and see seventy-three thousand, um, affordable housing units unless we take action. So, I will be supporting this and, and I thank all the speakers, uh, my fellow councillors and staff for your thoughtful comments.
Thanks so much. Uh, that's it then, council. So, we can call a vote on this one. Clerks? Just a reminder as always, if you can pull the voting results up on screen after, that would be great. And, uh, council, that has passed with, uh, Counselor Hardwick in opposition. Okay, council, uh, just waiting for clerks here to pull the vote up and then we can move the adjournment. Great. Okay, uh, so I think that's it and.
When has been the nation, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, sure.
Is this the last, uh, council meeting, public hearing, uh, until September?
Yes, I believe so. I believe there is an in-camera meeting tomorrow and that is it. I'm pretty sure. Clerks, can you let us know when the next public hearing is? Maybe that's too tall in order.
No. Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here and we have the next one scheduled for September fifteenth, I believe.
That's right. That's the, uh, that's our first council meeting as well, so.
Correct.
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah, okay. I think, uh, second or?
Second, Counselor Carr.
Great. Have we have, have we forgot anything, clerks? I know I'm a little punch drunk by this point, so.
It's all, it's, it's all good, Mayor Stewart. Thank you.
Okay, good. So, all in favor of adjournment, say yay.
Yay.
All opposed, say nay. We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody, for all your work.
Have a good summer hiatus, everybody.
Have a good break.
Okay. Bye-bye. See you tomorrow.
Bye.
Yeah, see you tomorrow.
Thanks, everyone. See you, sir.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Good night.